Stay here. Moonie steps. Okay.
Yeah, yep, yep. We're just talking about you Reverend Harvey. Somebody said, "Did he move out of, did he move yet?" I said, "Nope, he's still here."
How are you, Will?
Hey, alright. How are you? How's everything at, uh, in New Orleans? I see two of you made it back safely.
Great, yeah. Actually, I saw Cynthia last night.
Oh, so all three of you made it back safely.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna sit in here.
Good seeing you.
What's up, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
That terrible flight getting back. Eighteen hours.
No.
From where?
From New York. I was hanging, so I hung out with the Webster people. Me and Dale and two board members. We got stuck in DC. I think I left my hotel at 8:00 AM or something like that. Midnight. I was in DC for, uh, seven hours.
When was that last night?
Monday.
On the layover?
Yeah. Weather, weather, and then the woman told me, uh... She gave us, uh... She goes, "Oh, you don't, you don't..." You should connect the flight. I said, "You sure you don't want to be booking?"
Yeah. Your missed connecting flight, yeah.
Yeah, well, oh, yeah, they were...
Cameron, Cameron. Cameron was coming from...
Well, he wasn't happy that he wasn't...
He wanted to leave. He wanted to come here. Oh, Cameron. Cameron.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sure. We've got enough microphones, we've got enough chairs.
You don't want me here?
No, no. He's officially a member of the board.
Yeah, come on, I'm over here.
Who that one from up over there? Um, she's...
Yeah.
There's one, there's one over there I can go grab.
I could use a night off. My arm is a little tired. I've been pitching this sound in the morning. What's that? My arm is a little tired. Could use it. Working hard. I use that in baseball. When you give, when you ask the coach, "Could you give me the day off?"
When you able to...
You know, if your arm is...
So, so...
Oh, literally. Unfortunately, unfortunately, literally...
You don't wanna be around me in the spring. All I use is baseball and you hear me, "Oh, my God."
There's a chair right there. What's that chair for?
You don't recognize me.
What's that chair there for?
Twenty-one.
Next meeting is Wednesday. And they're doing...
What? Why do you say Spanish these days? I got something in the mail, but I totally disregarded it. No, I didn't even get anything.
It's not at, uh...
You said, "Parity?"
Yep, yep. I don't know why they changed venues.
It should be right. It's the new stadium. Shanae, they have to state their addresses. It's their name. Yeah. Anywhere student parents, staff.
No. And just step to the mic. And Annabelle. Annabelle. Annibelle. I'm just gonna go from side to side, right? Oh, yeah. You wanna do it at the beginning or...
Yeah. That would explain why the party was...
Exactly.
And the cafeteria is full.
We can't do raffles.
All sorts of stuff going on in there.
That's his thing. Oh, or this...
His school has rules, right?
I don't think they're gonna understand.
They wanna come into town next year. Spice School.
Remember, I was...
I haven't scheduled yet. I was waiting to hear from you. I wanted to know if you had gone through the...
I told you, I told you I'm good at reading people, man. I told you when I was in that room, I felt it. I felt it. She'd been mistreating people. I felt it, I felt it. They were just tired.
You got elevated for your time.
I'm telling you, I felt it.
Were you supposed to be like a first-class president?
Yeah. For another year. For another year. See, I told you when I was... I didn't even know where you're at. You're right. Yes. Hey, do it fast. Do, do I listen to you? Do you sell... Those two?
Hey, what are you doing tonight?
Exactly.
Say they don't pay you enough money.
Hey, that's alright. I speak Spanish too, so I know. Yeah, well...
Uh-oh. Is it scandalous?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, he don't play. That's bad, bad though.
Vic?
Hey, we need...
Just one, one minute. Okay. Alright. Hey. You got, you got to deal with Malik. Oh, is it ten?
I haven't heard of him.
Yeah, yeah.
Does he watch it too? Does Adam go watch it?
Yeah, you know everybody knows that, yeah.
I don't, I don't get that men like it. I don't get that you all like it.
Oh, Chicago Lane is a good show.
They gossip.
I just, Vince loves it. I just don't get it.
Oh, no, I seen it. That's a lot, oh, that's a good show. You know what the show is also called? Blacklist. That's Blacklist. James Spader. NBC.
Yeah, people been telling me about that.
You can catch it on demand. That's a very good show. We're gonna start in a couple minutes. We're just waiting for the raffle to get to where it needs to be. So, why don't people start coming in? We're about ready to get started. Good evening. Thank you. At least somebody responded. Thank you, Lori. I'm gonna try "Good Evening" again in a minute. Um, the most, uh, I won't, I don't wanna say the most important part of the agenda is the raffle, but it's certainly very important. So, we're waiting for, um, the, the raffle prize? Is that what we're waiting for? Oh, the tickets. You need the tickets. Just give us a, one more minute. My people who are out in the hallway, come on in. We're about to get started. Commissioner Adams. Come on down. I think that, sir. You got a chair for her?
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Adams. Nice to see you this evening. How are you? Coming down with a nice smile on her face. Mr. Adams, how are you?
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're gonna do a quick raffle.
Okay. Bless you.
Sorry. The first one is three, six, four, five, four, nine. Anybody have that? Yeah.
You wanna repeat the number, please?
Um, the number again is three, six, four, five, four, nine. No one? Okay.
No.
The next one is three, six, four, six, eight, two. Okay. Oh, oh.
Bingo.
Let's go, Austin.
Thank you. Just was unexpected. Alright.
He got a family pass to, um, Rochester Museum and Sign and Center. Can't even speak today. Yep, okay. So, next one is three, six, five, one, three, four. Again, three, six, five, one, three, four. Oh, okay. Come on again, Austin.
Same guy? Wow, you oughta play Lotto. You the man. Yeah, Mega Millions. Powerball. Check that man's ticket, 'cause I don't know. Wow.
Only took the two of us to block. Everybody else is hating on it.
Another family pass. Okay. Last one. The number is three, six, four, nine, eight, three. Again, three, six, four, nine, eight, three. Are you kidding me? Wow.
No.
Again.
No.
That is amazing.
That is not possible.
Okay.
Kick those things up.
That was the last one.
Okay, we'll do one final one. Hopefully, this time Austin doesn't have to come up again.
Is somebody checking his numbers? Hey. Seriously? Come on. What's your name? Sir, what's your name? Alright. Can we go to the 7-Eleven together after this is over? Wow. I'm impressed.
We're gonna do one final one. The number is three, six, four, nine, nine, eight.
Oh, that's good.
One more time. Three, six, four, nine, nine, eight. No one? No one? Okay. Okay. We're gonna go until we get another winner. Next one is three, six, five, three, six, seven. Oh, okay. Come on down. Come on and prick your prize. Hello.
Okay.
That's pizza right there, man. Grab the pizza. Go bigger, go home. We'll do more raffles after the meeting.
Okay, we're gonna get started. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna get started. So, if you guys could, uh, quiet down for a minute because I have to, I wanna read a brief statement. Uh, but by and large, this will be the only time you'll really hear anybody up here talk. I wanna be very clear about this. This is, uh, an opportunity for us to listen. And I know sometimes when we have our public meetings at Central Office, people get frustrated because you say stuff to us and we don't respond. And the reason why we don't respond is, we're here to listen. I've said repeatedly, um, that good leadership begins with listening. And that's what we're here to do today. So, um, this is gonna be one of the few things you'll hear from us. To just sort of set the tone and describe for you, for, for anybody it wasn't clear, why we're here today. Uh, East High School, as you all know, has failed to make academic progress over the last three years. Um, you have to make academic progress under New York State rules because, um, this school has been described as persistently low-achieving school. It's also described as what they call, the state calls a priority school. The State Education Department has requested that the City, uh, City School District submit a plan to address the academic progress of this school by, initially, April the 30th, 2014. Dr. Vargas and I convened a meeting with the officials of the state and asked them to give us additional time, and they expressed a willingness to give us until May the 15th. So, the deadline, and this is the first time many of you are hearing this, the deadline has been extended to May the 15th, 2014. The State Education Department requires that the plan that we submit include at least one of the following, uh, five options. Now, let me be clear about this. Not at least one of the five, one of the five following options. We can decide to close the school altogether and relocate the students, phase out the school and replace it with an entirely new school, enter it to a contract with what's called an EPO, an Educational Partnership Organization, and have them take over the administration of the school. And I should tell you with that particular option, that EPO would still report to the Board of Education, would essentially serve as a superintendent of East High School. Fourth, uh, we have the option of converting East High School to a charter school. And finally, we have the option of having some SUNY school, State University of New York, take over and provide educational services to the students in this building. As you all know, we had, uh, a previous meeting where Dr. Vargas, uh, took questions from the audience. Uh, it was his opportunity, hear you all, and to also respond. As I indicated earlier, that's not how this particular, uh, session is going to operate. We're just here to listen. Um, I should tell you that, under our rules, you will have three minutes. As Chair of this committee and as President of the Board, I have the option to extend that. We have a lot of people here tonight, that, so I'm not inclined to do that. I wanna make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be heard. If you say something that suggests you wanna engage in a debate with somebody here, just let you know. It's not that we're not willing to debate, but that's not what we're here to do. We are not here to criticize you. If you wanna criticize us, you can, but you'll be doing it within three minutes. The, the goal is, quite honestly, the goal is to come up with solutions. That would be my suggestion. Use that time, that very precious time, to offer up solutions. If you only spend time talking about the problem, you're not helping anybody in this community deal with that May 15th deadline. We cannot move it any further than that. If you want to have input with respect to what this Board is gonna do, again, I respectfully suggest you talk solutions. And of course, solutions can address problems. If there's a persistent problem that you see in this school, you can talk about that, but always be mindful that we should be moving the agenda towards solving the problems that brought us here in the first place. Now, one other thing. Um, you can take the mic over there, over there, but when you do, give us your name and tell us, for the record, 'cause it's all being recorded, whether you are a student, a parent, a staff person, or someone just from the community. And all comments are welcome. For those of you who cannot stay for the entire proceeding, as always, this, you can view this on the internet at www.rcsd12.org backslash r-c-s-d-t-v. Or alternatively, for those who cannot stay for the whole proceeding, you can tune into City Cable Channel, RCTV-15. Alright? Feel free to approach, and, uh, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna recognize this mic, and then we're gonna go to that mic. So, you can line up if you'd like, and we're just gonna alternate back and forth. Sir? Everybody's being so respectful tonight.
Alright. Hi, Mary Coffey, North Witten Village, and East High School is a part of North Witten Village.
And I am Bryce Miller. I'm President of Northeast Maine Neighbors United, which borders the East High School property, and we're here together in conjunction, um, with a message that we would like to send to you both.
Speak directly to the mic, please.
I said, "My name is Bryce Miller. I'm the President of Northeast Maine Neighbors United, which, which borders East High School." Um, and North Witten Village and I are here together in conjunction with the joint statement.
And, um, Nemnu is also part of North Witten Village. Um, education is the key to success, and the children of Rochester, unfortunately, do not have this opportunity. We are among the lowest percent in ranking in New York State and America. All this while the amount of money that is spent per child is the same or more than many of the highest-ranking schools. East High School is in North Witten Village, and we have worked diligently with the Rochester City Police, the Rochester Bus Company, the Rochester School Board, especially Malik, um, the Rochester City School District Administration. Many have come to our meetings. And East High School itself, to, to try to keep the children in school instead of walking in and out, doing drugs on the different corners. We have also helped to break up fights right in front of the school. These are some subjects, suggestions. The following are just a few suggestions when it comes to the Rochester City... when it comes to the Rochester City School District. The neighborhood would like to recommend that it ought to be done on the millions of dollars that are being spent. The neighborhood would like to partner with the citizens of Rochester, the mayor, the school board, and the school administration for the betterment of East and all our schools. It is time to take them back. It is time our children are educated so that they can be productive adults with good jobs. At this time, too many of our city school children have been lost. The neighborhood would like to see a strong push for parent involvement and let parents and citizens have more control. The neighborhood would like to see accountability of all individuals who are paid by the taxpayers and are responsible for the education of our children. We would like to see those who are not doing the job correctly be dismissed. We would like the union to work for the children. While we understand that their job is to protect teachers, this should not be done at the endangerment of our children. Mr. Robansky should be accountable also. All right, the neighborhood...
Okay, I'm gonna finish up. I won't be three minutes. The neighborhood would like to see good qualified programs, social workers, and psychologists working with our children in our schools. Many of our children are angry and suffering due to drugs, violence, and poverty in our community. Many are using or selling drugs themselves, what we can see firsthand living in the neighborhood. The neighborhood would like to see special schools for those who cannot be educated mainstream schools. We would also like to see remedial classes for children who are behind. These children must be found and supported, or they will become frustrated, depressed, and eventually drop out. The neighborhood would like to see any and all drug sales in and around the school stopped immediately and have law and order around our schools. There are numerous fights, and many children are afraid to go to school. And it is important to maintain the safety of our children in our schools and not let them walk in and around the neighborhood using drugs or getting in trouble, which is unfortunately a common trend within the neighborhood. The neighborhood would like to see the schools, along with the City of Rochester, deal with the different gangs which are taking our city children. We would like to see higher level drug world, or the higher level drug world that is supplying them and using them distribute their drugs, taking down effective immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Fox. I am a member of the Rochester community. I'm also a parent of a student here at East High School. First off, I would like to say thank you for bringing the meeting here so that those of us that are east can give you our input. First off, another thing I'd like to say, please take charter schools off the table. Charter schools are segregated against special ed students. My son has autism. Charter schools pick, yes, they have a higher graduation rate because they're allowed to pick and choose what students they take. And if a special ed student happens to get in the door, very quickly, they find a way to get them out. I think the two plans that are the best is the Educational Partner or SUNY. Don't take our school and change it. These kids love East. As I said, my son has autism. There's mornings that I say, "He's got a headache. Doesn't feel well. Why don't you stay home?" "I can't do that, Mom. I have to go to school." That says something for the faculty in this building, that they are there for the students. And we need, "I'm here. I fight for my son." Dr. Vargas, I've spoke to you many times. Mr. White, I've spoke to you. Ms. Powell, I've spoke to you numerous times. So I'm not a stranger. I'm not a stranger in this building. We need East to stay east as well. It has too much of a proud, proud background. I have been part of the Rochester City School District for well over 50 years. I went to 34th School back in the early 60s. I've seen the changes, not all of them good, that the district has gone through. We need to keep this school good. There's good faculty, good staff. We need to keep that goodness that's there. The ones who are really, really actually fighting for our children, not with our children. The ones who are teaching to our children, not at our children. And believe me, there is a major, major difference. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Robin Harvey, a retired pastor from the Peace Baptist Church. And what I saw about it said tonight about putting this school to a charter school, it should never come in your mind. What's so great about a charter school that it can be taught in a regular school like this? What's so great about a charter school you had to handpick people to go to that school? I feel like it can be taught in this building as well as a charter school. Everybody have a way of trying to get out of responsibility. But you can't get out of this one because we know the school have been down for the last three or four years. We know one thing, and it was a big article in the paper about the city school district, the most segregated school in most other states. And also is one of the discrimination school also. So what that would tell me, that we need the people who are responsible to teach our children in order to get with someone and make sure that every child be educated. I have a program to the church, and the title of the program is Teenage in Crisis. And they are in crisis. A lot of you sitting up on the boards, you don't understand a lot of these teenagers. I do. I know what they're going through. I be with them most every day and be trying to show them. They try to think on their own that education is very important. Until then, you won't be able to do anything. I went to school here, and it was in 59, 58, 59, and 60. And I went over to Franklin School. And it's a different ballgame from the time I was going. There were people that cared for me. The school during that time was the majority of white people during that time. But still, I was able, and I just came from Georgia, and I was able to mix in because I was taught, unless you get it, you'll be left out. If you don't get your education, you'll be left out. And that's a lot of things in school. See, when I was going to school, they had what they called different workshop. The teacher saw that you were not college material, then they would put you in an auto training program in a taileran and also plumbing and electricity and things like this. And they need to have students to go from the telephone company, even from R and G and E. During that school period, in order to take this training, all of these things shouldn't have never been taught or taken out of the school. But when the school got the majority of African-American and Latino, then all of these things were taken out of school and school been failing ever since. And when you take things out of school that people like, I don't see how some of you all can sleep at night when you know the school is failing and you can do something about it, and you won't. I don't see how you can do it.
A cordial greetings to the Superintendent, Vargas, President, Van White, and Community students and family of East High and members of the Hispanic community. My name is Benny Lopez de Victoria, course grade 12, and I'm from part of the bilingual program. I'm a person that at my age, I learned many things, one of which is the right of the others and respect their decisions they make. Many decisions, if they are supported, they are good to help the rights of others and do well for the future. There are many ways to help everyone as helping them looks at their problems and find positive solutions and that bear good outcomes. At East High School, there are many students who go through problems and difficulties, problems that affect their daily living in their classes and at home. Many have fear of getting solutions because they are not, know if they will do to the good in their life, or many are afraid that they may be discriminated by their talents or their beliefs, among other things. Their difficulties can cause getting distracted, that they lose their classes and lower grades. Many are affected and makes them throw in the towel, throw in the towel and give up. When we are all winners, if we chose to be. East High School Bilingual Program is a program which helps and supports many, no matter their background or their sexual orientations. They are only focused to help their students and their achievements in their life, in their daily living. But unfortunately, few resources have few funds for this program in order to flourish. Many of our bilingual teachers are very hopeful, but we need more, which is a solution. More teacher of our main language is the Spanish. And great counselor who speak the same language. That will help us to focus on something positive into something that will inspire us future students or those who are present today in any profession are great support for others. It's not easy to be a young Latino because we don't understand their language. We don't understand their race. But we have much charisma and talent. We believe in us and that we make a good future for our students or to any Latino or any student of any background who needs support. We can do good for everyone if we will unite. Can do great things together with the help of God. We can do good. Now I'm gonna read in Spanish as my first language is. Un cordial saludo al Superintendent Vargas, President Van White, Comisionados, Estudiantes y Familia de East Highs, y Miembros de la comunidad hispana. Mi nombre es Benny Lopez de Victoria, curso del grado 12, y formo parte del programa de bilingüe. Soy una persona que a mi corta edad aprendí muchas cosas. Una de ellas es cómo defender los derechos de los demás y respetar las decisiones de sí mismos. Muchas decisiones no las apoyo, si las apoyo, ya no son para el bien, para ayudar a los derechos de los demás y hacer un bien para el futuro. Hay muchas maneras de ayudar a todos, cómo ayudarlos por mirar sus problemas y encontrar una solución positiva y que dé un buen fruto. En la escuela secundaria East High School, hay muchos estudiantes que pasan por problemas y dificultades, problemas que afectan en su diario vivir, en sus clases, en su hogar. Muchos tienen el miedo de conseguir sus soluciones pues no saben si van a ser para el bien en sus vidas. O muchos tienen miedo porque los discriminan por sus talentos o sus creencias, entre otras cosas más. Eso causa que se distraigan, que pierdan sus clases y bajen sus notas. Eso a muchos les afecta y hace que tiren la toalla y se rindan cuando todos somos ganadores si lo decidimos. El programa de bilingüe de la escuela East High School es un programa a la cual ayuda y apoya a muchos, no importando de qué partes son, qué fuerza sean de ellos. Solamente está enfocado para ayudar y lograr en sus estudiantes un logro en sus vidas, que es en su diario vivir. Pero lamentablemente tenemos pocos recursos, pocos fondos para hacer este programa que florezca. Muchos de nuestros maestros bilingües son de una gran ayuda, pero necesitamos más cuál es una adopción para los maestros de nuestro idioma principal, cuál es español. Y un gran consejero que hable el mismo idioma, que nos ayude a enfocarnos en algo positivo, en algo que nos inspire así estudiantes futuros o los que ya están presentes sean de gran apoyo para otros. No es fácil ser un joven latino pues no entendemos su idioma, no entendemos su raza. Pero tenemos mucha carisma y mucho talento. Creemos en nosotros. Y si podemos hacer un buen futuro para nosotros, para nuestros estudiantes o para cualquier otro latino que necesita apoyo y ayuda, que se podamos hacer el bien para todos. Y si todos nos unimos podemos hacer grandes cosas. Juntos con la ayuda de Dios podemos hacer el bien. Thank you for your time.
Before we go on to our next speaker over here, let me remind you all that it is a strict three-minute time limit. Not that we don't want to hear you. We want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak. If people go beyond that timeframe, you're not hurting us. You're hurting the very folks who are coming behind you. We want to have an opportunity to hear everybody. If you turn around and look, there's a lot of people in here. We want everybody to have an opportunity to speak. So please be respectful of the time limit. If you see me do the mic like this, I'm about ready to say, "Hey, please be courteous. Finish your time." Okay? So I shouldn't even have to do that. Please be respectful of other people's desire to speak out on this issue. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Eileen. And I basically came to the last session. And thank you, Dr. Vargas. Thank you, everybody who came out today. But I graduated from East High School a long time ago. And I remember coming into this building broken, coming from a very dysfunctional background. I mean, I can go on and on about just getting on the bus. And this was a place that I called home. The teachers were interested. The teachers were helping. And I'm sure the staff is the same. But I'm here to advocate for the parents and the families that are not here. Because you can't develop socially, academically, if you're emotionally broken. And I think at some point, we have to get back to the practical ideas of what a student... I remember being that person. Now I'm working on my masters. Now I have a job now. But I remember being homeless. I remember coming home or leaving this building, wondering if my mother sold everything out of our home. And so I share that to be transparent, not to tell my business, not to be, you know... I think we have to get away from the politics. We have to get away from, you know, commissioner titles and superintendent titles. These kids are the ones that we see dead on Genesee. These kids are the ones that we see. If we do not figure out a way to help the people that are not here, everybody that's here, we're singing to the choir. I mean, we all, it's just the reality. And so I stand to just ask if you guys can just approve some practical programs. I mean, you can put something on paper and it sounds wonderful, but we have to figure out a way to authentically and sincerely help these kids and look in the eyes of these kids and ask them what they want. I mean, we don't have to hire anybody else. I'm sure I can call out names of people, teachers that I sat next to at the last community. My son is a student at School of the Arts. He's a black scholar. He's doing well because he knows that I am not from Opelika, Alabama, but I will handle him as if I was. And so I just, I'm that parent that I stand out. But if I was on drugs or had to work three jobs, I would want somebody to stand before you all and fight for my child. And so I just, I'm working with... God just brought these two wonderful people into my life. And we call it a movement, and he's gonna share his three minutes. Thank you.
Hola, muy buenas noches. Dr. Vargas, Van White, Comisionados, Estudiantes y Familia de East High y Miembros de la comunidad. Mi nombre es Maggie Canales, curso del noveno grado, y llevo ya casi para tres años en la escuela superiorís. Pues yo quisiera presentar mis consentimientos y soluciones, las cuales son las siguientes que voy a nombrar. Mi primer consentimiento es el siguiente. En la escuela superiorís hay un problema con la asistencia. Esto afecta no tan solo los maestros, sino también a los estudiantes que actualmente asisten a la escuela. Lamentablemente, el porcentaje de los estudiantes que no asisten a la escuela es un número no está permitido, pero todavía es menor que el porcentaje de los que sí vienen a la escuela. Y hay muchos estudiantes que estudian fuerte, se quedan en los programas después de la escuela. Hay una gran cantidad de estudiantes que sí se quieren superar y aprovechar de las oportunidades que provee esta escuela. Yo considero personalmente que no están tomando acción y le han dado muchas oportunidades a los estudiantes que no quieren superarse. Hecha un programa llamado Links para los estudiantes que están envueltos en problemas o quieren seguir o no quieren seguir las reglas. Y mi pregunta se va a ser la siguiente: ¿Por qué esperar tanto tiempo para acceder a otras alternativas que no nos pueden ayudar a todos? Ahora, mi siguiente consentimiento es el siguiente: Hay estudiantes los cuales sí quieren superarse, pero no se sienten salvos o se sienten cómodos. quieren superarse, pero no sienten, no se sienten salvos, o se sienten cómodos con las clases, que se las ha dado por diferentes motivos, algunos por las burlas en los salones, otros por los problemas, o algunos porque quieren entrar a estos programas que se le dan en la IS, y como no se les ha dado la oportunidad de entrar, ellos pierden la motivación de seguir hacia adelante. Bueno, ya analizado la situación, pensé que hay muchas opciones para los estudiantes, ¿por qué entonces no hacemos un programa en el cual aquellos estudiantes que están sufriendo de los problemas que ya he mencionado, por qué no darles un salón alternativo, en vez de un salón de tardanza, un salón en el cual haga tutor o maestro, que los ayude con sus tareas o el trabajo que ellos están perdiendo? Podemos hacer el cambio, hay opciones.
I'm gonna translate, I'm gonna translate. My name is Vanessa, I'm a former student here at East High, I graduated in '05, I'm gonna translate for her. Her name is Margie Canales, and she is an 11th grader now, she's been here for the past three years. Her options and her only hope is that you guys would bring back all of the good programs that we had before. Right now, what she's asking for is for everyone to bring the parents, teachers, counselors, anything possible to bring back to school. It's not so much as, you know, just closing down the school, or, you know, taking away the good programs that once were here, because no longer are here, and to work together as a community, because that's not what's happening now. Everybody's pointing fingers at everybody else before helping out the students. Everybody wants to sit in an office, or everybody wants to sit in an auditorium and, you know, just throw words out there. It's not about throwing out words, it's about actually working together and helping out these students, who, I can name out, I can name out teachers from when I was here. Some are in the auditorium with me right now, and if they were once working together, what happened to that, is what we want to know. You guys want solutions? The only solution here is to put everybody together and work together as a team. The team is no longer here, and that's what's causing the school to go so down on every single level. So if you guys want to know how to solve all of this, is working together, involving more parents. I remember when I was in school, there was a program where they would hunt us down if we skipped school. What happened to those type of programs? I was at Jefferson Middle School. When I was at Jefferson, if I skipped school, there was a patrol out looking for every single student that was skipping school. What happened to those type of programs? This school once had the firefighter program, what happened to that? The program for the special needs students, I was in one of those. I did the after-school program, I did all sorts of employment programs. I graduated with honors from this school. Why can't we help our fellow students do the same? That's, in a nutshell, that's what she's saying. We need to work together, stop pointing fingers at everybody else. Thank you.
My name is Paris Bryant, and I'm a fourth-year student at RIT. I'm a product of Rochester. And basically, I just wanted to say that through my life, I realized that education is not a privilege, it's a right, it's a natural born right. And we always say that we want the children to be educated, but it just seems that a lot of funding is being cut to educate these children. And I understand things cost money, I understand that, that's my major, but like the young lady over here said, it has to be a better sense of unity. The community has to come together and basically get things done. But the one thing that I remember when I was younger and I was in high school, was that people actually asked me, as a student, what that I want to see get done, and people actually took the time to listen. And I'm not saying that you guys didn't do that, but from what a lot of people and their concerns here in this auditorium seems like, that just didn't happen. And to sit there and plead for a charter school, it just seems like it's a cop-out, it seems like you're giving up. And if you're giving up on East High School, that means that you're giving up on the students here. And as the other young lady before that said, that a charter school, the reason why they do so well is because you get to pick who you have on your team. I mean, if this is basketball, and I got to choose to have LeBron James or Michael Jordan, I too would do that. But the fact of the matter is that special needs students, they're still students, and they're still people, and they still deserve an education as well. And just because it may, you know, burden you, as I heard some teacher say before, that's not that child's fault. Suck it up, and teach the child of what needs to be taught. You know, just because they were born with certain circumstances does not mean that it should hold them back in life, or that you should, you know, look over them in such a manner that you're bringing the school down, like, no. With that attitude, you're bringing the school down. So what needs to be done, maybe just bring back some programs, I understand it costs money, but just look to see where you can do that. You know, ask people to volunteer if you haven't already done so. I would take it upon myself to do that. I will bring it to RIT myself, and I will personally advocate for that, and I already do, you know, so, and I'm a part of this program called the Moca Program. Had I heard about this problem earlier, I would have loved to bring that to my Moca brothers, and found ways to have helped you out in this situation. So basically, what I'm getting down to, as my time dwindles down, is that never, don't stop fighting, believe in these students. I see so many students here today, fighting for you to keep this school the way it is. And I bet there's millions, I'm not gonna say millions, there's other students as well who wish they can get up and have the courage like these students do here, to say that as well. So just don't give up on them, you know, don't cop out with a charter school, just fight, fight, you know, so just fight, that's all I gotta say.
Buena noche a todos los presentes aquí en este auditorio, mi nombre es Elizabeth Teles, soy estudiante del 11º grado, y pertenezco al programa bilingüe.
Her name is Elizabeth Teles, she is an 11th grader here at East High, she is part of the bilingual program.
Estoy orgullosa de decir que en el poco tiempo que llevo aquí un año, he aprendido muchísimo y he crecido como estudiante.
She's proud of the fact that she's only been here for about a year, and she's grown so much as a student.
Pero hay una realidad, con el poco tiempo que llevaba el año pasado, que fueron simplemente tres meses, me tuve que enfrentar a cuatro exámenes o regions. Fue bien difícil, estresante para mí, porque no tenía ni la preparación, ni, como había dicho yo, este, no tenía los conocimientos necesarios para pasar dichos exámenes.
But there's a harsh reality here, she had to face four regions exams here, which she was not prepared for at all.
Entonces, de esos cuatro exámenes a los que me tuve que enfrentar, pasé dos de ellos, el de Globo y U C History.
And of those four exams, she passed two of them, Global History and U.S. History.
La mayoría de los presentes aquí conocen los difíciles que son esas dos materias, más sin embargo, yo me tuve que enfrentar a ellas. Menos mal que las pude pasar, pero no todos aquí los presentes, los estudiantes de esta escuela, tienen la misma capacidad para pasar dichos exámenes, y se les hace sumamente difícil.
She says she was lucky enough to be able to pass those exams, but there are a lot of students here who do not have the capacity, she had to pass those hard exams, and, yeah.
Y lo más preocupante de todo es que cuando fracasan en dichos exámenes, al próximo año tienen que coger otra clase, sin embargo, siguen debiendo este examen. So, se les ajunta y al final, al no tener la preparación necesaria para volver a retomar el examen, se les hace muchísimo más difícil de pasar dichos regions.
And she says in the upcoming years, if they have not passed the exams, they are forced to take a different class, that has nothing to do with the test that they had to take before, which they failed, and they have to take the test again without having retaken that test, being unprepared to retake that test again.
Entonces, una de las muchas sugerencias que me dieron los estudiantes, es que para el próximo año, en vez de que tengamos que tomar otra clase, que sencillamente volvamos a retomar esa misma clase en la que fallamos, y de esta forma, pues vamos a poder pasar los regions, y estoy segura que va a subir el índice de los estudiantes con respecto a los exámenes y a las clases.
She says one of the many solutions students have proposed to her is that we, instead of taking different classes next year, we give them the same class of which of the test they have failed, so in that way, they would be able to be more prepared for the test, and that way, the grades and everything will rise, because they will have been prepared, they will be able to have the necessary tools they did not have before.
Gracias.
Thank you.
So, hello everyone, my name is Alex, I'm a fifth-year student at RIT. I'm actually not from Rochester, but have actually lived in the city for about three years now. I just want to make three points. I actually grew up in Baltimore, which, I grew up in a very broken situation, I was homeless for a while, like, I had a hard time in school, but I ended up graduating in my high school with a 3.6, and I went to RIT almost full-ride scholarship because of the programs that we had in my school, and like, because of the mentors that I had, the teachers, the guidance counselors, they uplifted me. And to say that there isn't enough money in the budget, or there isn't, we need to cut this program because there isn't enough money, it's, to be frank, it's crap. Because aren't these kids worth investing in?
Amen.
It's kind of insulting to them to say, oh, sorry, we don't have the money for this program to educate you, so we're gonna put it into something else. It's insulting, these kids are our future. And a second point that I want to make is, have you asked these kids what would help them? It's, yes, I actually did some research, you did ask kids, but it was the top As and top Bs, what about the kids that are failing, what about the kids that need help? I think if you actually implement them in the program, and take their ideas, and actually listen to them, then they will actually follow along with it. And, sorry, this is really passionate to me, and I'm nervous, but that's pretty much all I had to say, thank you.
First of all, my English is not perfect, but I will try and do my best. Hello, good evening Superintendent Vargas, President Van White, Commissioners, students, and family from East, staff and other guests. My name is Julianni Canales, I am in the 11th grade here at East. I belong to the TLI program, which stands for the Teaching and Learning Institute, an excellent program for future teachers, mentors, social workers, and educators in general. I started this program two years ago, when I found out I would throw out another student. In this program, I learned important values such as respect for others, teamwork, and many more. As juniors, we go once a week to assist and observe in a class assigned in elementary school. Twice a month, we attend Nasser College to meet and talk with college students. As part of the TLI in my school, another, we also have another excellent program such as culinary arts, technology, healthcare, and others. In these programs, I find teachers that give their best for the students, and never give up on their students regardless of how bad the situation might be. I think that when A graders come to high school, to the ninth grade, they should be able to pick for themselves what program they want to be in, the programs I already mentioned before, instead of the counselor or somebody else picking it for them. That way, that way, the students will be more focused and come to class more often, happy, motivated, and in a program that relates to them. What I want to say with this is that East High School has awesome programs, with teachers who really care for their students, and that I am very proud of being part of the East High School family. And I also wanted to say that, as they say, we got teachers here that knows everything about us. Like, when you come in the classroom, just by looking at your face, they know if you're feeling bad, if you had a bad day, and I mean, for one class, you have like 20 students, so that means a lot for a teacher to remember each one of us, and what we like, what we don't like, what makes us upset, and what don't. We got teachers like Ms. Williams who is here, who every day, she stands in the front of the door and say welcome to us, and he's like home. He's like having that person that really knows you, because if you think about it, we spend more time, we, or teachers than we, or parents. So East High School means everything for us, and like he said, maybe if you give us another opportunity, and, you know, we don't have to get rid of East High School, we should just make the program stronger, and reunite, and make more stronger ideas. Thank you.
To everybody on the board, my name is Yvette Singletary. I am appalled at all of you, you should be ashamed of yourselves. This district has been grossly mismanaged for many years. Seven hundred and forty-seven million dollars, which is three-quarters of a billion dollars, and you can't run a district properly? You, Mr. Vargas, no disrespect, you need to be terminated. You do not report. It was at one time, you said Malik Evans. We were at a education conference in December, do you remember? December 13th. And you basically made a comment that said, your boss was Malik Evans, he was the president of the board at that time. Mr. Evans, you were absent from that meeting, but your father was there. That's not true. You may not have power, Mr. Vargas, over tenure, but you have power over the administrative component of the city school district, which greatly needs to be overhauled. Where's the money? Seven hundred and forty-seven million dollars, and children don't have books, there are not counselors in these schools, all of them, not just East High School. The resilience for these students is extremely important. What about the stressors? Moving them to a new location, making them feel that they're not worthy, teaching them that Christopher Columbus discovered America when he never stepped foot on the North American continent. We need African-American and Latino programs in these schools. We keep East High School and get rid of the board and the superintendent.
Hola, muy buenas noches, Dr. Vargas, President Van White, Commissionados, estudiantes y familias de East High School, y miembros de la comunidad.
Good evening, Mr. Vargas, President Van White, Commissioners, students, and families of East High School, and members of the community.
Mi nombre es Japhreci Belliard, curso al grado 11.
Her name is Japhreci Belliard, she's in 11th grade here at East High School.
Llegué aquí el primero de marzo del 2012, de Mikey Quejana, la República Dominicana.
She got here in March 11th of 2012, de, ¿cómo se dice eso? Okay. From the Dominican Republic.
Pues yo creo que cada estudiante necesita estar en un equipo o grupo para que cada uno de ellos desarrolle sus habilidades, talentos, conocimientos, y entre otros.
She believes that students should be in teams or groups, where each one can develop their abilities, talents, get to know each other, all within one.
Entonces así podemos evitar más los problemas con otras personas, en vez de estar compartiendo unos con otros aprendiendo uno del otro, por eso es la razón la cual muchos estudiantes que no saben el idioma o cultura pueden crear sus propios grupos de canto, baile, dibujo, entre otros.
Okay, she says that way, they can avoid more problems with other people, and instead they can become, sharing their knowledge with each other, and they can, basically, she's just saying, they can mix in with their cultures, they can bring all of their abilities, and be able to share the good things that all of these students have, because all of these students here have something good. And she says that they can share that with each other, instead of bringing the bad from what these people say is the streets. They can bring it together, so that they can bring the good things out of what people call bad.
Esta es una de las ideas para que nuestra escuela sea mucho mejor, muchas gracias.
This is one of the solutions she proposes, you know, for East High. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Malcolm Appleberry, and I'm happy to have this opportunity to address the superintendent tonight, and the school board, and those that are in the audience. The motive for me coming down here tonight was what I heard on the local television station about the graduation rate of city school district schools. And this is a very difficult problem to deal with, because there's a whole bunch of, I believe, dynamics that are working, that have created this problem, but I think we should just look for simple solutions to eliminate these problems. I wrote down some of the things that I think there could perhaps be solutions to some of the problems that are plaguing our community, and I do believe that we already have the real. And I do believe that we already have the resources to get these things done, and it won't take any more money than what we already have allocated to the city school, Rochester City School District. I think one of the solutions is, we shouldn't have, no school in the city school district should be seven to 11, or junior high, all the way up to senior high. It should be just, just seventh and eighth graders, eighth and ninth, excuse me, seventh and eighth, ninth and tenth, and 11th and 12. Because when you have all of those students together, too many, 12th graders shouldn't be mingling in with seventh and eighth graders, okay? They're too far ahead, okay, to be, and they introduce some things into the school that seventh graders shouldn't be a part of, okay? Because they're getting ready to go to college. So, we don't, that's number one thing, is that, okay? And, number two is vocational education. I think that the old Edison Tech was a great way to get students who aren't going on to college with the skills that they need, so that they can function. As soon as they leave Edison Tech, if they learn how to be a welder, or a plumber, heating and cooling, they have skills, marketable skills, that they can take right into the community from high school, okay? We should have more than just Edison Tech. We should have at least two vocational education schools and systems, which could also double in the evening for training adults who need continuing education, okay? Number three, I'll try to be brief, I only have three minutes, okay? One other thing with the vocational education, this could be done with some type of partnership and collaboration between business and the city school district, so that they can pinpoint where their needs are, so that you just won't be throwing all kinds of vocational education skills that there isn't a market for. So, business can help with this, and also, they can help fund it. Okay, number three, I think there's a great need for truancy officers. You gotta have them, because before you can educate a student, he's gotta be in the building, okay? And you gotta find out why he's not in the building, so teachers don't have time to run him down, administrators can't. So then, truancy officers are needed. They're essential, okay? They should be on the staff of every school where needed. Okay, let's speed this up.
You gotta wrap it up, sir.
Wrap it up, okay. Next is, this is the last one, consent forms.
Very quickly, please.
Consent forms. I think consent forms, so that if parents aren't able to come to school, so that someone else can advocate, and also sign forms for a parent, those consent forms are also needed. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
It's always good to remind folks, again, be respectful of other folks' time. When you go beyond your three minutes, you're hurting somebody else from having an opportunity to speak. So, please, when you hear that bell, just try to wrap it up as quickly as you can. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan Vega. I'm a retired school counselor. Worked here at East for quite a few years, and I still have quite a few staff members that know me here. First of all, I'd like to commend Dr. Vargas on putting social workers at the elementary schools. I think that's greatly needed. One of the other things I would highly recommend also, I think we're the only district that does not have counselors at the elementary school. I think that is greatly needed, greatly needed. The other thing I think that will help not only East High School, but every other school, is social promotion. We have to stop that, one way or the other. A student can fail seventh grade and eighth grade and be placed in ninth grade. Here is a student that has failed junior high three years consecutively, and now, the teachers in the ninth grade are supposed to work miracles. It's not going to happen, so we need to stop that. The other point I had, and the last time I was here, Dr. Vargas mentioned that because of poor record-keeping, this school should have had 50% passing rate, but because of poor record-keeping, it was not. Now, why is this school then being penalized because of a district mistake? You know, honestly, that's really crazy. The other thing is, one thing that will help many schools is, like one of the ladies said, we need support staff. We have in this building, no records keeper. And she was the one that kept charge of students that dropped, students that moved. We have no book clerk. We have one librarian for this entire building. Come on, you know, how many, I hate to say it, and I said it before. If you look at a yearbook of 10, 15 years, and you look at a yearbook now, how many administrators are in one building versus teachers and students? You know, one administrator can pay for, I bet you, all those support staff. You know, you wanna help? You wanna help the ninth graders? You wanna help them? Let's stop the social promotion and keeping them, you know, promoting them to ninth grade, and then expecting miracles from these educators here. I think the teachers in this building give 100%, but unless the board does something, no school, every school in this district is gonna be on that review board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brett Crandall. I'm a school counselor here. I've been here for nine years. And I'm also a city resident right in the Beechwood neighborhood. I'd like to specifically thank Mary Adams and Van White for being here for the town hall meeting that we had three weeks ago. That meeting went till 10 o'clock, and they stuck it out for most or all of it. Thank you very much. I want to just inform the public a little bit about how East High might have gotten to this place. One point first is attendance. Just a snapshot from the seventh and eighth grade. For ELA and math state testing, we have to do home visits for three straight days just to get students in for the exams. I wanted to be noted that if we don't test 95% of our students, that's a state mandate, we go on the Need for Improvement list. If we just let that be, and made no effort to get students, we would probably test around 80 to 85%. Not to mention the fact that very few of these students are in the proper mindset to take these exams, or even understand the importance of them. It will often take a lot of coaching, prodding, and encouraging just to get students out of the door. But if we don't test 95% of the people, people in Albany with the bow tie starts waving his finger at us, it's your fault, it's your fault. Second point, students coming to us that don't meet proficiency. I want to preface this just for a minute. I hate the negativity that goes around the data surrounding our students. Our students should not be seen as failures. Yet, they hear all the rhetoric, they hear the reports that call them failures. But I just want to bring up two data points here tonight, and that's it. 1% of students entering the seventh grade this year met proficiency in math and ELA before they ever stepped foot in East High campus. This is a huge problem, but is it East High's fault? And before Common Core, 11% of the students entering seventh grade met proficiency. Third point, staff turnover. Mr. Soler, our wonderful principal, started five years ago and worked hard to successfully change the culture and atmosphere of East High School. In his second year, he lost 36 full-time positions due to Bizzard's equitable student funding that was introduced. We warned about this. Unfortunately, it was adopted four to three by the school board. There's one person on the board that was not responsible for that at all. Some of the positions we lost were RTI, PBS, administrators, attendance liaison, school safety officers responsible for student safety. This created a huge changeover in staff due to displacements, and resulted in lost relationships and trust with our students. Remember, there is also a learning curve for new staff members into such a large school, too. I remember the East High staff versing consolings about this. This is a big part of the budget gap. The budget gap that year, a big part of it, was because of the increase in charter school enrollment, which just continues to grow, and grow, and grow. That was also part of Bizzard's Brod Academy agenda. We are suffering the Bizzard days still. The fourth point, the transient student population. Just this year alone, 10% of East High's population that we currently have have come to us during the middle of the year. New entrants come from many different areas, and that is part of the beauty of a large public, I want to say "public", comprehensive high school. But it is not uncommon for us to receive many students back from charter schools midway through the school year, or just before testing time. Students are dismissed for a myriad of reasons: poor attendance, behavior, low academic performance. These private schools, without tuition, do not play by the same rules, and something needs to be done about this, especially since they already skimmed from the top. I also have a concern about possible future graduation rates for all buildings. Not offering general math or general science courses the last two years, students are gonna have a difficult time getting their third year of both subject areas for graduation. I worry about this. Couple of possible solutions.
Sir, you gotta wrap it up.
Okay.
Very quickly, please.
A couple of things really quick. East High is not alone in this. This has happened at Douglas, Edison, Franklin, Marshall, and it will happen again. Who's next? When do we say enough is enough, and start to address the real issues that face urban school districts across the state? I just found out this week that they're closing Fowler in Syracuse. They received the same letter we did. We need to fight back and advocate for our urban school districts, I have one more paragraph, which are set to fail in the current systems that are now in place. Our kids are not data systems. We receive students from all walks of life and work tirelessly to mold them as people. Each student takes a lot of time and energy. This is a lot of work that is done that cannot be reflected in data, and it is something that I think East High does the best at. We might need to come up with a different data system to analyze urban public schools. It is called differentiation. You ask your teachers to do it every day in the classroom. The needs of urban schools are not the same needs of suburban schools, and you cannot necessarily measure them the same way.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Now, here's what's gonna happen. Here's what's gonna happen. If everybody does it, and I'm not, this isn't a comment on what he said. This isn't a comment on what he said. This is a comment about respecting other people's opportunity to speak. So, if everybody did exactly what he did, and again, I'm not commenting on what he said. You have every right to applaud it. But, the rights that I'm talking about is everybody having the right to speak. If everybody did what he just did, nobody would have a right to speak, all right? There is a three-minute, there is a three-minute time limit, and there is, someone just asked me, how long are we gonna be here? Personally, I will be here, just like I was a couple few weeks ago, until the last person, listen. Someone asked me a question, how late does this go? This will go, as far as I'm concerned, until the last person is standing.
So then, if somebody has something else, they ask for them to come back up?
But listen, if someone wants to speak after everybody else has spoke, you can come back up, all right? Three minutes. Yes, go ahead. We're over here.
I promise I'll be courteous. My name is Sandra Lake. I live in the city. I did not attend East. No member of my family, as far as I know, attended East. I began working with the North Winton Village Public Safety Committee many, many years ago. And, through them, I became involved with East, because what they were doing with East seemed to work. It seemed to help. The first thing I'd like to say is, gee, I wish three-plus years ago, when East was on the failing schools list, we would have done this. Wouldn't that have been great, and wouldn't have all the suggestions helped, possibly? But, East is on the failing schools list, and even the Board of Education is not going to really be the final decider in what happens to East. It's going to be the state of New York. And I see charter schools not as an option. It takes too many years. I don't see a private enterprise coming in, just because nobody stepped up and said, we'd like to run your school for you. The only option I see, closing the school, getting rid of Annabelle, giving it a different name. We've seen that done over and over again. It hasn't really improved the schools. It's kind of a worthless idea that the state has. But, possibly partnering with a SUNY school, and hopefully MCC might be interested, or GCC, or, I don't know, OCC, for a couple of reasons. They do offer more of a BOCs at the community college level, and it might be something that would stir a passion in a high school-level kid, also keep them in that frame of mind of attending college. So, that's what I'm hoping for. I don't know if any of the community colleges have yet approached you. But, we all, I guess, a lot of people here have nostalgic memories of East High, and I guess that's all they're going to be, is nostalgic memories. Because something here has to change. It does have to change. I applaud you, Dr. Vargas, because I was involved in, I think, the first one. There does need to be something between our PD and the school district regarding truancy. There was years ago. But you have stepped up, and you've started the truancy blitz. It's helped. It's at least gotten people talking. A woman around the corner from me, who is very arthritic, can't walk her young one to school 33, and I urged her to get in touch with Patty Maljiri. She called a bus company, and they threw her under the bus. And I said, no, no, go right to Patty Maljiri. She will get a bus for your child when you can't walk him, and that is happening. So, I think, you know, we are coming together. And, again, I wish we would have started this conversation about East three years ago when it was first listed, because now we're at the very tail end of things, and a lot of things are going to be decided for us now. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Howard Eagle. I'm a Rochester City School District parent, retired teacher from the Rochester City School District after 23 years, adjunct instructor at SUNY Brockport, local, state, federal taxpayer. I'm glad that you agreed to let people come back up, you know, after everybody had their three minutes, because this is part of the problem. You can't be serious that you want people's input about solutions, and then tell you got three minutes to give it to them. You can't be serious. You can't be. So, I know it's gonna take more than three minutes for me, because I have some real ideas about solutions. I said to some of my colleagues, I know they're not gonna listen, but I'm gonna say it anyway, right? And I was skeptical about even coming here to speak, because I thought, I called her the Twitter lady. I thought she might be here, and I might say, uh, or, like, or, you know, she a Twitter, ex-teacher was up there trying to speak, and he couldn't get a sentence out without saying, oh, you remember that happened at the last hearing, right? And so, I was skeptical about even coming, because I don't want that kind of stuff out about me that I don't know how to speak, I don't know how to articulate, and so forth. But anyways, here we are. Look, there's no doubt. You can't find, everybody understands that this is a crisis, and it's an old, old crisis, and it's systemic in nature. It's not just about East High School. It's about, the whole Rochester City School District is in crisis. And so, if you're really gonna solve this, there is, every PhD knows this. There's absolutely no way to do it without taking a systemic approach. Nothing else is gonna work. It truly has to be systemic. Now, in terms of, and East High School could be like the case study of how you can do it. See, so with every crisis comes opportunity. Those two seem to go hand in hand, right? Every crisis creates an opportunity. We have a golden one right here now. These are real solutions I'm talking about here now. In terms of the options, I hear the community saying, I hear the teachers, the parents, the students, everybody saying, we don't want to close East High School. Clearly, they don't. I hear the superintendent saying, I don't either, all right? So, it's gonna stay open. Seems like the most logical option is, and I've studied this stuff, is this idea, you know, the new language now, the EPO, the Education Partner Organization. That seems like the most logical option, to me. But you're looking in the wrong place for potential partners. You're looking in the wrong place. RIT, and MCC, and St. John Fisher, and Brockport, and GNCO don't know nothing about urban education? They don't have no expertise in K-12 urban education? But there are plenty of people in this community who do, got lots of expertise. So, I'll come back, because I want to lay out to you a real idea of what to do.
There you go. That'll work. Yes, sir.
I'd like to agree with the last two speakers in a demonstrative way. My name is Harry Pearl, and I didn't go away. I'm still here. Dr. Vargas, nice to see you. I'd like to suggest, maybe what they need is an umbrella organization, EPO, whatever you want to call it, whatever it is. Because people need to feel responsible to others, on their toes. And in addition to this, I'd like to say something in Spanish, and I don't know a word of Spanish. of Spanish. All these speakers were speaking in Spanish, and I didn't understand most of it unless it was translated. So I have something here for Dr. Vargas. Do you know what this is? Do you know what this is?
Así de fácil.
Can you hear that? What did it, what did, what did, what did the button say?
Así de fácil.
Okay, I have a translation.
That was easy. That was easy.
Okay. Observation, the word "East" is a four-letter word. The word "easy" is also a four-letter word. The two words differ by one letter. This is, I had, I got a PhD for this. So it may be that the solution is very close, that you need to look for simple ideas and repetition, boring, very boring repetition that works. You have to find out where that is, and I still recommend the easy button. You can get a butan fácil if you want, but certainly, let's hope for easy solutions for East High School. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Cleanda Yarde, and no, I'm not a teacher at East High School, but I am a teacher in the Rochester City School District. My brother came to East High School. I had other family members that went to East High School. And when we look at how we think that this is such a big organization, but what affects East High School is gonna affect me at NRCS. And if we don't begin to open our eyes to systemic issues that are plaguing our district, we're not looking at, I just came from a great PD at Wilson Foundation, and a gentleman said it very clearly, "Our district has an issue with reactionary systems. We react to everything, and very rarely are we proactive." This type of system, when I was here at East back in 2009, when Mr. Cavalier was still here, what did we really do to give him the support that he needed so when he stood alone, he was able to stand and propel students, propel parents, propel other stakeholders? When you take away and strip your leader of the things they need to be successful, and then you wanna sit and stand flat-footed and say, "You are the reason, and because of this, we are going to take this from you," when we have a board? We have a board who is supposed to go and visit schools. We have a board that's supposed to interact with the students, with the teachers, with the administrators. So when you sit down and make resolutions, your resolutions are full of solutions and not these ambiguous things that are not obtainable. Smart goals is what the district needs to go back to. So if we think closing East is just gonna stop with East, it's gonna propel to other schools. And if we don't wake up as a community, understand, I may not be a teacher at East, but what is affecting East is gonna come to my house. And if I don't want my house to be corrupted, I have to stand with this leader and say, "This foolishness is gonna stop, and it has to stop." Because our kids at sixth grade that I teach, that I look at, and they had a firefighting program here, they have a culinary arts program here, and you're telling me that we can't find anything that's of good quality in this school? I beg to differ, and if we get outside of central office and begin to get outside of our cubicles and really interact with his real people, and really see what is really affecting them, instead of spending thousands of dollars with WestEd and other consultants to meet with me, but you can't come out of your offices and say, "Excuse me, what is it that you need to be successful? What is it that you need to be successful? Let me take some money from downtown that we're misusing, and let me put it here so your children, our children..." Because until you all stop saying, "These children," and look at it as our children, we are not going to succeed. And until we begin to pull parents in, in every football, basketball game that you had, I would've been standing flat-footed, tear down these board meetings to let them know, "We can and must make a difference," and it's gonna start today.
My name is Anna Santiago. I'm an 11th grader here at East High, and just like everything I've done in these five years I've been here, I will not be leaving. I've been here before, I've talked before, and I plan to speak my mind again, just like you know Mr. Vargas and most likely Dr. King. You, I have done a petition with another student fellow here regarding, you know, what's to be happening, hoping you guys could come and clear everything for us. The message of that petition was communication. There is no communication here. There's no communication between the board, the staff, the students, the parents. There's no communication anywhere, and that's what we need here. We need people to come and talk to us, to tell us, "Look, this is what you're missing. We need you to do this. What can we do to help?" We need communication, we need support, and we're not getting none of that here. And we need that here at East High, because when I walk into this door every day, I see people who come in with these long faces, who don't know what's going on with the world, and I, I don't like that, because I come in, and I come in, and I think school, safety, haven. What I do here, I come to do because I love it, not because I come here to sit and mope around. So what I just wanna say is that, just like everything ever since I was here in seventh grade, I used to love all of the staff that were here. And then, like one of the former speakers said, because of what Bizar did, a lot of the staff were cut, and a lot of those people I had real deep connections with, and I loved talking with those people. Now that they're gone, you know, I've had to grab from other places, but the fact that these staff are here to help us every day, and the fact that I can go to them every day and say, "Can you help me?", and the fact that they say, "Of course I can," is the fact that I love it here at East High School. Communication is what we need, and that's what we are asking for. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name's Kyle Crandall. I'm a 13-year teacher at East, 16 years in the district, and neighborhood president of Beachwood, and live on the corner of Grand and Denver. I'm fully invested in this community. I have evidence for you. We live in an evidence-based system. Here's evidence. So if you're taking notes, here you go. Point number one, let's talk about the true graduation rates. These rates are what are publicized by the New York State Department of Education, not RCSD, not our own. These are New York State Department of Education. The last time East High School had a overall graduation rate below 50% was the class that entered ninth grade in 2002. That is the last time we were below 50% for an overall graduation rate. Now, all we hear is 40 to 42% in the last three years, is, that's the four-year graduation rate. Here's what I don't understand. SUNY schools, who get to pick and choose what kids go to their schools, have the same person that oversees them in Commissioner King, they get five years for a four-year program. Their graduation rates are based on five years. Yet we, who educate anyone and everyone from across the globe, 21% of our students are special ed, 23% of our students who attend East High School, their original language was something other than English. We take everyone, and we only get four?
Right.
So our graduation rate, our graduation rate is not 40 to 42%. It is above 50% for the last decade. And, catch this, our superintendent has made publicly known that there's probably a 10% difference because of poor record-keeping. That would put our overall graduation rate above 60% for every single year, for the last decade. Now, let's talk about staff turnover. Dr. Vargas says, he says our kids need more stability. Annabelle was given the job five years ago. Since then, 46% of his original administrative staff remains. 51% of his original teaching staff remains. Where's the stability? And we're gonna shake it up all again? We just heard from our last student. Number three, let's talk about the State Education Department. The last time they stepped foot in this building was January of 2013. It took them 10 months to develop a report. We received the report at East High School in October. 10 months! They have not been back since to see if any of the recommendations have been implemented, and they kick us a letter saying that we have five options and we have 45 days. Oh, they've extended it 15, excuse me. So now we have two months. Took them 10 months to get a report to us, and we need to have a turnaround plan in two months? Let's talk about the menu of options, the five things. We all know what they are. I hate to say it, go to try to take any of your spouses out to dinner. You would leave if this was the menu you had to choose from. There is nothing appetizing on this menu. Now, Mr. President, I'm gonna tell you, can I have three more minutes for my community? I'll go right... Nope. Hey, hey, all right. As a mathematician...
No, no, no. Come back around. That's all, that's all. I just wanna make sure everybody speaks. Now, now, listen, let me tell you something. Hold on, let me tell you something. I am gonna make sure that everybody has had a chance to speak before you go the second round. That's all. Wanna make, no, 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 wait, 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 wait. No, 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 listen. This is how it's gonna work. Everybody will have a chance to come back around, but I wanna make sure that everybody who has not had a chance to speak gets to speak first. Those are the rules. There's no debating it. No. Listen, listen, listen. Sir, sir, this is not a debate. Over here, Ms. Thomas. He can come back, he can come back. Howard's coming back. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening. My name's Lori Thomas. I'm a retired teacher of 17 years, and my solutions are this: accountability, respect, and caring. You cannot expect our children to do anything other than what they see our adults doing. And when they see our adults selling them out for dollars, they feel worthless. We are dehumanizing our children because we are not respecting them. We choose to penalize them instead of understand them. We choose to create unnecessary barriers to who they are as human beings. Poverty is not a barrier to the human spirit. 14609 or 14605 is not a barrier to the human spirit. Our children are gifted and talented, and they can overcome any situation, as long as they understand that the adults in their immediate environment are held accountable, have respect for them, and care about them. You have heard people say that they've come from some very disparaging situations to make something of themselves because they had caring people in their lives. When I was down south with my son, and my son, who was an advocate of all these things that are going on in education, said, "A school board is not responsible for loving a child. A state is not responsible for loving a child." But, and my answer to him was, "But a teacher is." You're not closing a school. You're creating deaths for thousands of individuals because you're tearing relationships apart, and that is a death. And you're not providing any kind of counseling for the lives that you're destroying by saying, "Your school has failed," because that puts in a child's mind that they are failures, and that is an unconscionable thing to do to a child, okay? We are talking about human beings. We are not talking about money, and yes, I understand that your concern is money, but when your concern is about providing teachers who have already been excellently educated with millions of dollars of PD, instead of putting them in the classroom where they can connect with children, that is, I'm sorry, but the definition of stupid is doing something that you know is wrong. It's an easier definition, but that's stupid, okay? We have to begin to concentrate on our children. We have to begin to show them that they're gifted and talented, not that there's something wrong with them and that they need special services. We have to pull out of them at the elementary level. We're talking about high school here. We forget that high school children come from the elementary level, and we're not servicing our children, we're not providing love and care at the elementary level because we're shoving them into classes of 30 and 35 at the youngest level. I'll be back.
Hi, my name is Katie Merrill. I'm a graduate of East High School, class of '06. Two of my sisters and one of my brothers also graduated, so this year is the first year in over 10 years that someone from my family isn't at East High. The school is obviously very special to me. I'm very invested, that's why I'm here. I drove in from Albany, where I'm in grad school, to, well, 'cause it's spring break, but also to attend this meeting. So I just want to ask you some questions, and I don't expect answers. I just want to know, how many classrooms you've visited and how many students you've talked to? Don't expect them to come here. These students are not empowered, most of them. I mean, some of them certainly are, and that's amazing, but so many don't feel that their voices will be heard here. How many of their classrooms have you gone into and spoken with them? How many of their teachers have you spoken with one-on-one? Don't talk to the teachers union, talk to the teachers. You all, I'm sure, have your PhDs and your master's degrees, and if there's one thing I've learned in grad school, it's that academics know nothing. We don't know anything at all until we talk to the people who are affected by the problems. We can't solve anything unless we hear what they have to say and hear what they think is and is not working. Because you might have your numbers and your quantitative data, but you don't know anything about what goes on day-to-day in the classrooms, in these students' lives, until you talk to them. So you can't have these big meetings and expect people to come here at 6:30 in the evening. You need to be here at 7:30 in the morning, talking to the students who do show up every morning. So, that's all.
My name is Ricardo Adams. I have two kids in Rochester City School District, a first, a second grader, and a kindergarten. So I'm gonna be, you're gonna be seeing me a lot. What I know about East is that, since I've been coming advocating for education, outside of Soder, there's no other school that has been more tight-knit of a family. When they came out for Brian Kumarti, it was, it was unbelievable. It was like it was sold. It was unbelievable. The principal got to be the only principal in this district that everybody knew him by his first name. Got to be. I don't even, I don't even know his last name. Annabelle. Come on, come on, come on. We gotta keep it real, and there's a lot of things wrong with the district, but today, we need you to focus on East, on East High only. Don't sacrifice East trying to make a big overhaul of everything. For right now, we need to do East, and there ain't that many options on the floor, because closing the school and charter school is the same thing, 'cause for it, to be a charter school, you have to close it, 'cause they ain't coming in here with that, 'cause they know it'll be proved a fraud. They can't do nothing in here. They have to close it and hand-pick kids, so all that's the same. Don't take any other options off. I know EPO sounds good, but even if we have to just change the name to keep this school intact and give it the support it needs, let's just do that. Let's just focus hard on keeping this school together, man. I went to a game almost down in New York City to watch this basketball team here. I felt like it was a home game. It was so many people from Rochester went all the way down there to Glen's Falls. And that's important, too. That, everything is important. They got this program here, the TLI. Man, it's a whole lot of good things going on here. Is there, is there some problems? There's problems in your family. There's problems in my family. I don't get along with all my brothers, and there's problems. You know what I'm saying? So let's focus on East and get East up this chopping block. And one other thing, push back against the state, because they put a hole on this, um... They put a hole, some kind of hole, they said, they put on Common Core, or maybe the evaluations, 'cause Common Core wasn't implicated. They need to put a hole on evaluating schools, because this Common Core stuff is, it already got a problem. When you add Common Core to it, yeah, they're gonna, we're gonna be able to fail in some ratings. They need to put a moratorium on all this priority, focus, and all that, too, not just on the teachers' evaluation. Put a folk, a moratorium on rating these schools, man, till we get this together, man. Don't just listen to them, listen to us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lita Williams Matthews. I have had the joy of working at East High School for 24 years. And I say joy because I love teaching, I love learning, I love working, and it is hard work. In these 24 years, I've seen a lot of great things, and of course, I've seen some things that have not been so great. How do we need to fix East High School? The solutions that were given don't address our issues, but I have some solutions. Restore programs that were effective and meaningful for our students, our vocational programs that were slated for this reason, that reason, and the third. Restore staffing. We have suffered so many staffing cuts since I entered the building, and we, yes, we have learned to do more with less, but is it reasonable when our social ills are getting greater and greater, when our student needs are compounded day... student needs are compounded day in and day out? I said it before, and I'll say it again. We need programs in place that systematically deals with our students' academic, social, mental, financial needs consistently, day in and day out. Period one, no, before first period to after school. Our kids are beautiful. I love them, they know it, I show it. But they are so needy, because many of the things, all the things any child deserves to have, day in, day out, they have to manage without. And we have to fill that void if we want them to actually learn, to be successful, whether it's learning academics or learning a traffic. If they are hurting, if they're in pain, it's difficult to break through without the proper support. So whatever option we all come up with, it needs to have sustainable support programs to serve the academic, social, mental, emotional needs of our students. They deserve that.
You know, Van, you got me out with that last-minute robocall yesterday. Now, I will have to say as a parent, it was disrespectful in the sense that it was last minute and you wanted us to come today. But I don't expect any more from a district that's in corrective action. So I'm not putting that onus on you, 'cause you may have just found out that we need to be here and that they hadn't given us any notification. So I will give you credit for that and just say, you did get me out. This is my alma mater. I actually graduated from East High School. But, but what I'm here to say is, graduating from East High School, the cycle is the same. I'm here because when I graduated from East High School, the same thing was going on. They closed Madison, got transferred here. And now we're going full circle with the district that's in corrective action, that knows that the school was, had sanctions, and yet, we are now at a place of options one, two, three, four, five, and yet, the vast majority of the community doesn't necessarily know the details of what those options are. What I will say is that having an EPO come up in here, if we have to have an educational partner come up in here, then someone at the district, a couple of positions at central office have to go. Because those same positions, those same positions that we would hire an EPO to do, those same job responsibilities, we're paying somebody to do it now. Multiple people, multiple people. And if, and if, as a board, you cannot ascertain who is responsible within those departments under those job descriptions making a hundred thousand plus, then we have a bigger problem, which goes back to the district that's in corrective action. Secondly, we have Edison, which was a school that was broken up because of sanctions. We have Franklin. We have a Madison slash Wilson slash Wilson Foundation, whatever that is. We already have those things. So again, I will go back to positions at central office where those same options, this is not new, those same options, the same sanctions, the same track, the district has already followed and allowed this particular school to be in the same predicament, with the same staff and the same structure at central office that's allowing this to happen. So we cannot bring outsiders in when we're paying people to support this school, as well as the other schools, because we have Monroe in the same predicament now. This is not the only school in corrective action. So I guess what I'm saying is, when we look at what the district has done, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. This school needs to remain East High School. The people down at the district who should be supporting this school, who should be showing them what Kyle said as far as data, the successes, the firefighters program, the culinary program, the perk program, all the programs that are here, evidently someone hasn't shown them how to document that data, so that the school is not in corrective action. All the kids that are here are not failing. So for me, I, I hear the bell, if there's a choice of the five, it's just to break the school up on paper as you did Edison. Edison got to remain Edison, but you broke it up. We have vocational pieces here. Somebody down at central office who's making a hundred thousand or more needs to be able to document how we recreate and restructure this school without changing the name of the school and ruining successful programs.
Thank you. Now, I'm, I'm seeing some familiar faces up, except that gentleman right there, and I know he wanted this gentleman to speak. You, you wanna step forward? But other than that, I see some familiar faces, so we'll go to round two. While, what, sir, you wanna go next?
No, no, no.
No, 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 okay. I wanna make sure anybody who has not spoken has a chance to speak now. Alright? You can step up to the mic, 'cause I see some people that wanna have a second opportunity, and we promised them they could do that. But anybody else who wants to speak, please step up to the mic now. Sir?
Okay, good evening, Commissioners of Education, Dr. Vargas, students, colleagues, community members. I'm Joe Baldino, I've been around a real long time. It's my thirty-fifth year in the district. With that experience, you know, we, I've seen a lot of things that actually do work, and we have done well, and I really wanna build on what some people have said. I think we need to do it internally, work among ourselves, people that have had some good things, been successful. You mentioned Edison, I was at Edison for a long time, wasn't totally successful. We had pockets of, of success. I was in business, finance, entrepreneurship, and I, imaging information technology, did come off the city list. I don't wanna get into why we still closed, we got caught up in a whole lot of politics, nothing to do with Dr. Vargas or anyone on the board, but those things happened. I still think we need to look internally here. I believe there are things going on at East right now, I'm new to East this year, that are really working. I'm at the seventh grade, Martin Street Campus. We have a bunch of seventh grade kids that are brand-new, and they're really starting to come together and do a good job. I think that even though this is a big building, we can come back next year and keep a middle school here where the kids are isolated, can have a good beginning to them, and then roll into the high school more prepared as ninth graders. This is one suggestion I'd like to make. They mentioned some good programs, culinary, optics, future teacher program. These are good programs. And then Dr. Vargas even said, we oughta keep some of these things. Let's build off of those successes. The other thing I wanna mention to you is, we need to recruit in the local area, the elementary schools in this area. Let's build community-based schools, more community feelings in the, in the area that we have. We can build a health center here. I know I saw one at Edison where the community can use the health center. Parents can come and use it. Students will get the healthcare they need. I also, honorable to his credit, on March fourteenth, and Van, you came that day we got done with this, went out and visited our community. Probably one of the most powerful experiences I've had in thirty-five years, where we're talking to people, even people that didn't even know, didn't have kids in this school, were talking to us. We need to bring back that kind of a thinking process. Make this a community school, make us part of the community, and get out and work with the community. Another thing we need to think out of the box, we need to use every staff member we have in this school to work with our students. Over at the Martin Street Campus, we have an excellent custodian, I'm gonna give him a shout out, Alonzo Conley. The man is a sage, he's a really experienced man, he's been through so many things. We have a lot of young men in need of guidance at the seventh grade level. We're gonna do like a grounds crew with Alonzo. So while they're working outside with him, they're also gonna be getting some mentoring. These are just some of the things we can do right here at East and build on some of the successes that we've had, and begin to put this together in a way that'll be successful for our students. EPOs are nice, they sound exciting, but they have to understand our students and our district. There's no one-size-fits-all, we're gonna bring in things that are gonna be successful automatically. And the other thing I wanna mention, some wonderful, incredibly positive student speeches tonight, we, they are, these are our customers, and so are their parents. And I really believe our students are smart enough and intelligent enough to be part of this process. So I, I, good, perfect timing, I'm all done. I, I, I would love to be, continue to be part of this process, and thank you very much for listening to me.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly. I'm, my son is a student here. Thank you, Dr. Vargas, for coming out a couple of weeks back and dealing with me, I appreciate it. First, I wanna state is that I think as a, as you stand before me, and we're all here tonight, I worked a ten-hour shift, and just seeing how some of you are positioned and are acting, it feels to me that just because you're slouching over, you're tired and everything, you're not supporting us. I'm tired, too. I have six children, okay? I wake up at 5:30 in the morning, make sure he's on the bus, but if I don't see that from you, I don't feel supported here. And that's what I'm feeling tonight. Okay? I'm upset, I'm a little, my heart is pounding, but let me just say that, no matter what we decide, if we don't have support from you, to the teachers, to us as parents, like one person said, had you told us three years ago, I would've been here. I would've volunteered my time. I would've did what it needed to take to help my children and other people's children. When I was a younger kid, no one under, I didn't understand the meaning of it took a village to raise a child. As a parent today, I do know what it means. It means I get up at six o'clock in the morning, you get up at six o'clock in the morning, everybody here gets up at six o'clock in the morning, and we support these children in any way we can to make them the best people that they are. No matter what we decide, it will never happen. It will keep happening that we will have these schools closing, we'll have our children dying, going, working at McDonald's, wherever, until we all come together, communication telling us, not the five o'clock, you know, call that I get saying, "Oh, you have a meeting tonight." No, I should've known that two to three weeks ago. You know, there's no communication, and it upsets me, because I love Rochester, and I have other children coming up in here, in the school districts, and there's no support all the way down, all the way up. I would like if you guys would come to our schools, not only East, I have twenty-two, fifty-four, twenty. I've never seen anybody from the school district in any of those schools. You know, we need that support. No matter what you decide, honestly, I feel like it's not even our decision anymore. It's up to you guys, you told us at the last minute. That's not acceptable as a parent. And I am an active parent. I know all of these teachers' emails. I'm at work getting in trouble written up because I'm emailing Ms. Gross, Mr. Ames, whoever it takes. So if I'm willing to do whatever it takes, I expect everyone else to do whatever it takes to support East, every child in the Rochester City School District.
Good evening, Commissioners, Van White, Dr. Vargas, Commissioner Cruz, who I see in the back. Thank you for joining us. I debated whether I was gonna speak tonight, and I think what probably pushed me more over the edge was my kids. This is their school, this is their community. At the end of the day, as leaders, which you have all been elected to be, you have to lead. And what I'm gonna ask you to do is probably not popular, and I know there's political things that go on behind, I'm not stupid, been in the system fourteen years, more than a third of my career has been trying to make East the lighthouse. What I'm gonna ask you to do, because no EPO is going to step up because of the timeframe. I know because I've met with some to try to help them, because, to save my school. I know because others have called me to say, "What were your challenges?" This is an opportunity for you to be leaders, to step up, to be courageous, and do probably something that's very unpopular. And to say to the state, "We've tried all of these options before, show me where it's worked, and we will replicate." A simple question. It's not popular, it will not be popular, and at the end of the day, your hand will be probably forced. I understand it. But if somebody didn't sit in the front of the bus fifty-something years ago, Van White wouldn't have been there right now, Cynthia Elliott wouldn't have been there right now, and Malik Evans wouldn't have been there right now. Somebody stood up, to whether it was Goliath, David versus Goliath, and just said, "Listen, our communities are different, they have different needs, just like our own children at home. We treat our own kids differently. All I'm asking you to do is take a, a moment, reflect on your own leadership and courage." And I know it doesn't sit well that a superintendent and a board couldn't make a decision about a school district, but I can tell you right now, I know with pretty good certain, you cannot find another urban school district in this country that is performing without some kind of filter, without some kind of way to pick kids, pick staff, do something different. The beautiful thing about East High, we don't do that. We take what we get, we do the best we can, we work hard every day, and we're proud of it. So I ask you guys, and I know you probably won't do it, I mean, I know for a fact you won't do it, because of the political ramifications. Again, all I'm asking you to do is be courageous, take a step back, and understand that East is a reflection of a broken system. Broken system, disconnected. If you're gonna do something, leverage this to fix the rest of the system. I'm the principal of this building, I'm held accountable every single day, whether there's garbage on the floor, a kid across the street getting in a fight, someone selling drugs three blocks away, it comes back at me. I own that. It's part of my job as the leader. I try my best every day, and we will continue to do that. What I ask is for you to do the same thing when it comes to leading this district, and understand, although I'm in charge of it, I have very little autonomy to fix it. I can't do master scheduling, I get handed a budget, I get handed staff that are maybe displaced or relocated. My staff and I are a pretty tight unit, we don't always agree on everything, okay? Everything, but we try to work through it. And I can tell you right now, I don't know if Dr. Obanski's still here, but he can probably tell you that the amount of issues we have in this building are probably the most minor than any other building he has in the district. And it's because we agree to disagree, but at the end of the day, we keep kids at the forefront.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Rob Kettles. I'm an alumni from East High School. My oldest sister and brother, we graduated here from seventy-six, to me and my last sister came out here eighty-four and eighty-three. I got a daughter that's graduating two thousand and fourteen from here. I got another daughter, she'll be going in ninth grade, and she will be going here. But East has been our school for life, where we biz, where we are. This was, school made me who I am today, coming to East. But the thing that I don't see is a lot of support coming from the board. Now, what I will say is, it amazes me, because when I went to a basketball game in Buffalo, I seen Van White at the basketball game. I went to Glen Falls, you know, the stuff we had to do to get the kids to go, to get the cheerleaders to go, and the basketball team to go, he was the only member there. It amazes me that we see so many members in here, because it's about chopping up a school or breaking something up. But when it's something for the kids, where it's not your job, it's like the members don't even show. And it's amazing, you know, you have to show the kids that you care about them, you know, 'cause you in that position. They look at you as a head, and if you show some love or some, that you care, the kids gonna show you that back. And maybe the problem has been because maybe you've had people in positions that doesn't care or haven't cared, it's just a job. But I can say for myself, the times that I've seen Mr. Van White, he's been to a game that he didn't have to go to, he was the only superintendent person there, he was in Glen Falls, and he didn't have to be there. So maybe if you do more, show the kids that you care more, the kids can give you more. And then also, too, with that being said, you gotta have parents on a board helping you do what needs to be done. 'Cause without the parents, kids gonna be lost. Without you, kids are done. So we gotta have those kids, and we gotta have parents, and you gotta have people in your superintendent's board that care about the community, care about the city, 'cause the city is what it is. Suburbs, I've never do the suburbs. Suburbs is whatever. The city is what it is. So y'all have a good evening, thank you.
You know, I had promised that I wouldn't comment, but this doesn't relate to me, I just want the record to be clear. Commissioner Adams, and perhaps this gentleman didn't know, she was at both those games with me, just so that you know. She was there. Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, President White. So I'm gonna do something that is commonly done in education circles, and I'm gonna activate a little prior knowledge. Where I left off was, the menu of options was not very good. And if you were to take your spouse out to dinner, you would leave, because there's nothing appealing on that menu. And I had no idea that Mr. Soler was gonna come up and say what he said. He's asked, actually, we're asking you to maybe leave the restaurant, and it may take some courage. Now, fourth point I was gonna make is staff and student passion. Why are we here? I came directly from a baseball game. I want you to know one other thing. East High School is the only school in this city that has taken for the last four years a baseball team out of state to be able to go and get an experience. I will be back here at 5:30 in the morning, boarding a bus at 6:30, taking our kids to Philadelphia, where they're gonna get a chance to go on a campus tour, they're gonna get a chance to play an out-of-town game, they're gonna get a chance, for some of them, the only time they're ever gonna get out and get to a major league game and see a Phillies game, and I got four other people who are gonna volunteer, the beginning of their holiday break, to be able to go with us, staff members, teachers at East, who are gonna go and give those kids that experience. Why? Because we're passionate. It doesn't sit well with me... It doesn't sit well with me that all the suburban kids get to go down south on their spring break and play baseball and our kids don't have that experience. So we're giving it to them and we've done it for the last four years. I won't see my kids until probably Monday. But I'm here tonight because this is how important this is. And Dr. Vargas, I wanna make a comment here and to the school board as well. Here's my comment. Your largest concern should be if you had these meetings and no one showed up. If there was apathy about this, that should be your largest concern. That's not happening. There's no apathy here. There is pride. There is passion. That's what we're here for. Fifth point. Despite the rhetoric, no one, board members, no one wants to include the current staff in where we're going. I know it's been said publicly, but it was, I wasn't able to be there yesterday. There was, we had a baseball game I was at again yesterday. But the teachers came back out of that meeting and they felt like, this is how they felt. They felt like it was told to them, don't even bother coming up with your own plan and submitting your own plan because the district is doing theirs. Well, no one knows or cares more about these kids than us. Besides their parents and families. I'm gonna tell you something about our leader. Our leader, there was a master scheduling crisis before school opened. I was asked to go be on the centralized register, our team, I declined. I wanted to be in the building. I didn't want to leave East. That's why I didn't go. I'm hoping that I'm on extended time. So here's what happens. I'm one of those special ed, you know, students when it comes to speaking. Sorry, Mr. White. So Annabelle calls me in Labor Day weekends, spent 36 hours making sure that we had a master schedule that would work for the opening of our building. And you know what he says when he found out the magnitude of what needed to be done? Why don't you come over to my house and we'll spend the night together? Working together, what's best for kids. That's the sort of leader that we have. He can't be stripped away from here. So the options, the options that we hear, the options that were presented yesterday to the teachers were TLI, optics, and culinary. We need to keep those. We're all in agreement about that. And BOSI's. Guys, BOSI's takes 80 kids. That's it. So we're gonna go down to three programs, TLI, optics, and culinary? Are we gonna put 350 high schoolers in all three of those programs? Where's the kitchens? Where's the optics? They're all great programs, but let me tell you something else. Earlier in the week, earlier in the week, 14 students were signed up for TLI and the school was told, had less than 15 course requests, we're gonna have to delete those course requests. Because it was only 14 kids enrolled. So are we not gonna have TLI next year or are we? My last point. We as the staff felt like we needed to send a letter to Commissioner King. Our original intent was to have him come for a collaborative meeting. That was our original intent. He has stated to district leaders that he will not come. He won't come. He's not interested in coming. But yet he responds about East, 10 miles away, in Greece, earlier this week, but he won't come to us? Folks, I'm very concerned now. When he was here in the fall, Commissioner King said, he was walking into schools and said, you better turn things around or we will close you down. That's what's been coming out of his mouth. East is first in a long list. I'm almost on, Mr. White. I thought, I thought New York State had an anti-bullying campaign. These are bullying tactics. Charter schools, I'm telling you right now, they won't take SPED, they won't take ELL. They won't take them. So you know where we're headed? If we keep down this road, we will have the most economically segregated school system in New York State. That's what we're gonna be left with. I am, I'm done. Listen, I'm done. I will no longer allow our kids to be rats in a laboratory experience, in a laboratory experiment. Now, here we go.
Now, listen, no, 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 hold on, no, hold on. I appreciate everything you're saying, but again, it's important to be respectful of what we're trying to accomplish. Wait, 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 let me finish. I listened to you, which is to let everybody who has not had a chance to speak, speak. So please wrap it up because I see two gentlemen who Ms. Coffey just said, wait a second, these guys haven't spoken. Let's all be respectful of other people's rights to speak. So wrap it up, please.
Got it, President White. David and Goliath, they had no clue. Ready? Ready? David says, who is this uncircumcised Philistine that he should defy the armies of the living God? There is a Goliath. And that Goliath seems to be the State Education Department. So school board, would you have the courage to stand up and say, who is this out of touch commissioner that he should defy the education of our urban youth?
Good evening. My name is Ed Brockenbrow. I'm a faculty member at the Warner School of Education at the University of Rochester. I came here mostly to listen to community members and East High folks. But I wanted to just tell folks at East that there are a lot of folks at the Warner School who really just are amazed by what happens at this school. Some of my colleagues were here and we have student teachers here, counseling interns. We see a lot of amazing stuff. I have a few East alums in my program at U of R who've, I train teachers how to teach and the kids who are East alums who come through the program, I should say young adults, they're not kids anymore, are the best teachers because they, they know the district. So I just wanted to voice that Warner School is really, there are a lot of us at the Warner School who are really supportive of East. And I also wanted to throw out that when I was in, I'm from Philadelphia originally. In around 2006, 2007, there was a lot of money thrown at the district to create small high schools. I was part of an evaluation team of that initiative. The high schools that had a year to plan are the ones that are still standing and thriving. The ones that had like four months to try to throw something together, they faltered because they were set up to fail. So I hope that, building off of Principal Soler's, you know, wonderful speech, I hope that one of the things you can push for is for us to have more time. Because all the research shows that if you only give four months to throw something together, then you're just not gonna get any good results. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Wallace Smith. And before I move any further, I wanna go back to what Mr. Bardino was saying about, he mentioned, he made a mention about the seventh and eighth graders being with the high school and that's not where the success we had in the past, that's not where it was at. We had three different divisions. We had elementary division that went up to fifth or sixth grade. And we had a middle school division that went from seventh and eighth, maybe sixth, depending on, you know, which one it was. And we had a high school that went from ninth to 12th. And with those three different divisions, I mean, we had success in the city. I mean, you know, it was when they started throwing all that mix in, we had a lot of trouble. And, and along with Josh Lofton closing and those kids, you know, no longer having anywhere else to go and those guys being brought into the city, you know, the rest with everybody else. And it made it so harder for the rest of the kids. You know, with, I mean, you're in a classroom with 25 kids, unless if you have 24 of them learning. You have one kid that, that could have been at Lofton, that's affecting that whole class at that time. It's, it's heavy, you know, especially when, when, when we had a principal, when we had a school talk about, you know, you had a staff that was cut down, you know, heavy load that were gone, you know. And now you have, you know, that one kid with less staff and so much, so many more issues and problems that they're having. I mean, it's, it's, so Mr. Bardino, I mean, I don't agree with that at all because that wasn't, that wasn't how we had success in the past. I mean, welcome to East High School, I'm sorry. I mean, seriously, it wasn't like that, you know. And as communication goes and we speak about, you know, board, you know, staff, parents, you know, speak about open and effective willingness to learn without being judgmental, willingness to say how you feel and, and you guys are really, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard, you know, seeing this. Especially, I mean, you know, you guys, I come from, you know, five generations of East High School, you know. A grandfather, father, myself, I have sons, I have brothers, I have, you know, you know, great nephews and nieces that, you know, are here or that were here, you know. And it means a lot, man. Seriously, it means a lot. And, and it's hard to, to, to see you guys like, you know, whatever, you know. But I mean, I, I'm gonna let my time be up and I'm gonna come back around because I have some other questions for you guys. So, you know, thank you.
Good evening. Many of y'all know me. I'm Anthony Plonzinski. I'm an East High graduate. And, and usually I'm not tongue tied and y'all know that too. What Annabelle said is important. And I come to you as a community member, a lifelong resident of the Beechwood neighborhood. I also come to you as somebody who works in the schools and you have my 100% full commitment of myself and our programs to work with whatever model we're gonna get stuck with. But it's true, we should not be stuck with it. We're all gonna come together and work together to help the school build to where it needs to be. And we've been in conversations and individuals have been trying to enter the conversation to help that. That goes without saying. But it is true. The timeline that is being received by the state of New York to turn this school around is criminal. It's criminal. And any EPO doesn't want to touch it. And we have to be willing to say that more so publicly. As a graduate of the Teaching and Learning Institute, as an East High grad, I have a lot at stake here. But I'm gonna take it one step further. I find it insulting as a democratic leader of the largest city district in the city of Rochester that our democratic governor and our democratic commissioner visited Greece and today Arondecoy when the largest school in this district in this county is failing and the folks want to hear from them, but they won't step into this district. It is their problem. We need our democratic school board members to step up and say the same. While I don't know if you guys will go that far, but I will. There's a race for governor this year. There is a race in town. And I am the first democratic leader in the city of Rochester. I will not endorse a governor that ignores our schools and I will not endorse an arrogant commissioner who does not know what's happening in this district. I will let the majority leader know that and I will continue to know it. Others need to do the same. It's time to stand and lead. Because yes, we will be here to help, but the politics are there. So Annabelle, I'm answering your call. I'm here and more of y'all need to do the same.
I hear that last comment, but if we wanna talk politics, the governor and the commissioner of education and all the rest of them people in Albany, they just now start ignoring this school district. We talking historic reality. So, so that didn't just, so I don't know if y'all get excited about rubbing shoulders with King and them or not, but that ain't what this is about. This ain't about no symbolism. And it ain't about democratic politics with a small d. It's not about that. It's much, it's about our children. It's much deeper than that. So, and I know where I left off too, you know, and I'm gonna come back to that, but I just wanna be clear, I'm trying to give what I really believe are solutions. I believe this, I'm bold enough to believe this is the best possible solution. Not, not like in totality, but the core of it, the core of it. And, but I wanna be clear because I talked about systemic change. We need systemic change and we do. You're not gonna be able to do this if you don't take a systemic approach. But I wasn't saying, don't focus on East. I agree with Ricardo. Remember I said, this can become the case study of how you're gonna have to eventually do this across the whole district. There is no successful model right now. I'll mention that in a minute. To, to, to the principal, Mr. Annabelle. I hear you. I heard you. You said you don't believe that there's an educational partner organization that's gonna step up. I want, I want you to hear me on this point and consider this. Because I believe that there is not one, but many. And, and, but we in agreement about them needing to step up. Let me see if I can put a twist on it and see if we agree. Now, now, this is where I left off. I said, I believe that this education partner organization is probably the best approach based on what I've been hearing. Everybody seems to be in agreement. They don't want to close East High School. At least the parents, the students, the community, right, and the superintendent. So it seemed like we got agreement on that consensus. I don't know what the board members think. They haven't said publicly. So then how, okay, then how do we approach this in terms of an educational partner organization? It's not U of R, it's not Brockport, it's not St. John's, it's none of the colleges and universities in this area. They don't have the expertise in K-12 urban education. They do not. They don't. Some, they, they just don't. But there are people in this community who do. Who are you talking about, Howard? Are you just making some noise? No, no, here, let me tell you who I'm talking about. I'm talking about the Freedom School. I'm talking about ABC. I'm talking about Urban League. I'm talking about Ibero and whoever else the Hispanic community thinks should come to the table. I'm talking about the Faith Community Alliance Education Committee. I'm talking about the United Christian Leadership Ministries Anti-Violence Initiative. I'm talking about the Nation of Islam. I'm talking about Facing Race, Embracing Equity Education Committee. So what I'm suggesting to you is you don't need a partner, what is it, EPO? You don't need one education partner. You need many. And this might be a part of taking the stand. Because I don't know what the rules are. I don't know if the rules say you can only have one. But if that's what the rules say, then if the community now, you see, we gotta get this part too. Because we gotta be with them, but they need to lead. That's what y'all elected them to do, is to lead. But we need to support. See, we, we gotta become serious about collaboration, cooperation, collective. We gotta become serious about that. So you step up and you say to community, the parents, the principals, the teachers, everybody's saying, we wanna have a lot of partners. And we want them to all be grassroots, community-based, grounded people with expertise and love for our children. So we don't want no outside partners. We want inside partners. Now, now, so look, now, what am I, what am I saying? See, because this is not, this is not phony and stuff. I'm talking about a real plan. So I'm talking about call up George Moses and call up James Norman and call up Bill Clark and call up Ms. Escher and call up Minister Florence and Bishop Davis. Call up Tillman and call up Reverend Stewart and call up Minister Kenneth and call up, I don't know who it would be for free. I don't know if it's the lady from the museum, but that might be Norman twice. See, call these people, along with teachers, parents, call Jerry Hunt, oh, you're on the list. I just, you're on the list, right, the Frederick Douglass Resource Center is on the list. Put them all in the same room, get it, with teachers, with administrators, with support staff, with parents, with students and say, we gonna fix these high schools. What do you bring to the table? You can't come with no mush mouth. You gotta say what you bring that's gonna help fix East High School. Now, I know, okay, now look, the next question becomes...
Howard, can you wrap it up? Or you can do a part three. But can you wrap it up?
Okay, let me finish.
All right.
The next question becomes, especially from the superintendent's perspective, where's the money gonna come from? Don't play no games with us. There's no college, no university, and certainly no business type organization that's gonna come and partner with this district for free. You gonna pay them hundreds of thousands, if not millions. So that's the same money. Well, Howard, is there any more money? Yes, I say the superintendent should look at his budget. There's a lot of fat in his budget. I wanna give you some examples.
Howard.
I want, I'm, I'm finishing right now. I wanna urge everybody in here to look at the February 14th edition of the Rochester Business Journal and read an article about outside agencies that they already contract with. It is amazing. That, listen, here, here, this kinda stuff, you should look. Let me finish. Mr. White, you said that...
I'm trying to let you finish, but you're not finishing.
Yes, I am. Actually, I am. I'm giving you a, a solution.
But, but, but Howard...
No, 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 you gotta have money to pay for this. Let me tell you where it's gonna come from.
Let me, let me just ask you...
Here's where the money is gonna come from.
Howard, can you finish this up in 30 seconds?
Yeah, I don't know about 30 seconds, but I'll try.
Then, then Howard, then Howard, have a seat, have a seat and let these two, let this person speak and let this young lady speak and then we'll get back to you.
Okay, let me finish this last point because I got more after this.
Howard, Howard, if that's gonna take...
You said I got 30 seconds.
Can you do it in 30 seconds?
I think so.
Okay, well, all right, let's see.
So, so, so if we gonna urge the superintendent, where else to look besides the money that they were already gonna pay colleges or whoever they bringing, right? Besides that money, look in the budget. What is he looking for? He's looking for $505,000 that they give to a community agency to do behavior modification. He's looking for 12 agencies that are paid $3 million to support the district's expanded learning initiative. He's looking for the before and after school program that receives $2,911,900 for additional teacher and administrator salaries. He's looking for $700,000 that he pays to the so-called Supes Academy, S-U-P-E-S.
All right, Howard, Howard.
For leadership training for administrators.
Howard, 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 Howard eager, come on, man.
There's more money. I got more to say. I'm giving you a point.
Well, you can, but let other people speak. Let other people speak. Yes, ma'am.
I have no idea what I wanna say now. The one thing Howard said is, this is about the children. And I know Kyle had statistics and came up to 60%. That's still a horrendous failure. The state, the commissioner of education stepped in because they had to step in. The state, the commissioner of education stepped in because they had to step in. It's a failure. Our children, it's our children, our children, Howard, they're being destroyed, not just East High School, the grammar schools, the middle schools. Where is the accountability across the line? Not, I, I mean, I taught a million years ago. We had supervisors at our doors all the time. We had a, we had a big teaching. These children had to be learning and we had to be doing our jobs. Where can you get a job and once you start, you'll never lose that job. These are our children we're dealing with and everybody, and I'm sure a lot of bringing in these charter schools is a fear that you might lose your union. Everybody is fearful of losing their union, their protection, even, I'm sorry, our board, our union supports a lot of the candidates, um, political campaign. We have to stand up for the children. That's it. The whole city of Rochester is a failure, the lowest in the state and almost the lowest in the United States of America. And everybody's accountable. Everybody, even the teachers, I'm sorry to say. Thank you.
Lori.
So, um, let me say, I'm not calling anyone stupid. What I'm saying is the system is stupid. The system is built to create failure and we have to stand up and stop it. And, and Howard, I can't even express how close we are in what that EPO should look like because I was going to say the exact same thing. You want an EPO to come in, make it the community because there are concerned members of this community that can help the students because we understand these students. We can respect these students and we can help these students work through the problems that they deal with. School is sometimes the only saving grace of a child. When I was at number 33 school with my children, I wasn't even teaching yet, we had a young man breaking into the school and the, 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 the principal said, what do we do? We're going to have to call the police. And I said, he's breaking into school. Find out why he's breaking into school. It's because the child was homeless. He didn't have anywhere else to go. School was his saving grace and we're quickly pulling that rug out from underneath of our children. And you wonder why they're in the streets? You wonder why they're fighting? You wonder why they're discontent? Because we're not showing them the love and the care in the only place that they have to get it and only place that they, they found it and we're taking that away from them. That's what's stupid, that we're not giving our children a chance. So I urge you, the state does not want East. They don't want these schools. This is a tactic that you're using to get you to follow their agenda. Stand up. Say no. This is our district. We live here. You won't even come here. We're going to decide what we're, what are they going to do? Take money away? But they're not going to take our children away. Okay? These are our children. They're not dollars and cents. They're not data bits. They're children. And if we have to lose a few million dollars to save a few hundred children, it's worth it. We have to stand up and say, no, not Rochester, not now. We're going to do what's best for our children regardless of what you think is best for an inanimate body called the school. They don't want us. They didn't want Buffalo. They told, they threatened Buffalo with the same thing. Now they don't know what to do. Stand up. We have a history of standing up to the atrocities that they tried to put down on us. Stand up. Be the school board that says no and says our children are more important than your dollars. Thank you.
And then turn right back to.
Before, um, you take the mic again, Mr. Eagle. Hold on, I'm, I'm going to take the mic. I just want to point out something because I did point out, uh, how the process works. I just want to clarify something for everybody. If we do not pick one of the five options or if we pick an option and we're not clear and provide, and I'm quoting, a meaningful program that will, now I'm just, I'm giving you the state language, a meaningful program that addresses the state's concerns. And let me tell you all, the power over schools does not lie in school boards. The state control. Let me, let me just, Howard, other people may not know this. State, I get three minutes? The state makes, the state controls education. Now let me, let me say this, just so that you understand what happens. If we do not choose one of the five options or if we choose an option and we're not clear about how we plan to provide meaningful change for the school, New York State will appoint what is called a distinguished educator and we will lose complete control over East High School. That's how it works, just so that you understand the process. If we don't do what they, we tell, they tell us to do, pick one of the five options or if we're not clear when we choose one of those options about how it's going to change this school district because the constitution vests the power of educating kids in the state, they can remove East High School from us, appoint a distinguished educator and we will have no control, local or otherwise, of this, of the school. Am I right, Dr. Vargas?
Yeah, yeah, I think.
So I just wanted to clarify that. That's a procedure.
Yeah, I think most people probably understood that. So I'm saying, I'm suggesting to you, accept one of the options. Only say to them, we need to tweak it. It's not going to be a university. It's not going to be a business. It's, it's, it's going to be a series, a group of partner organizations which are grounded in our community. And you don't have to go by yourself. But see, this is critical. We need to go with them to say it. Dr. Urbanski, you need to, if he's still here or he's got somebody here usually, you, you need to rally the troops, get them buses and stuff ready. See, we need to go together to say, we're making a statement as a community. Yeah, we like the EPO, but we don't like it the way you're suggesting it. See, but then you got to get the people in the room and you got to actually develop the plan, superintendent. You got to develop the plan and you got to have the guts too. If you call somebody in the room and they don't got nothing to contribute, you got to have the guts to tell them, I'm sorry, you ain't got nothing to contribute, you know, or at the moment. No, 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 no. The people you calling, these lists I was making, right? If somebody come in, they don't know what to do and they say, you need people who got expertise and understanding and knowledge about how to design a systemic approach, institutional approach. I'll help you. You don't have to give me a dime. You don't have to give me a penny. I'll help. And there are plenty of people in this community who will help. And, but, but, but don't get me wrong now, I'm not advocating. I think this age of volunteerism is over. This idea, every time they want parents and community and others to do something, they want to volunteer, but they'll pay you a bar and, and these people I'm naming, well, let me get back to where I was. You, this is where you should look in the budget. You got, you got, I was talking about the $700,000 for the Supes Academy to train administrators. I don't get it. West Ed, get this one, get this, think, think, think. West Ed, $254,000 for two school transformation projects. If West Ed knows how to transform schools, send them to East. Why are you paying them $254,000 and they haven't produced a model? This is crazy. This is nuts. Listen, get this, get this, three, this is a shame. This is a crime. Three outside consultants at $54,000 each to help diagnose priority schools. Did you hear what I said? That's nuts. That's crazy. It's not grounded in any kind of logic, any kind of diagnose priority, priority schools. Any teacher could do that. People who are not teachers could do that.
Howard.
Okay, okay, let me, let me finish. Uh, let me, get this. They pay Harvard $102,000 to provide fellowship slots in their strategic planning data project to four district employees.
All right.
Okay, I'm trying to tell the superintendent where some of the fat is in the budget.
Howard.
And that's just partial of this.
Howard, Mr. Eagle, you do know there's a budgetary hearing on April 22nd. This is about.
I'll be there.
We get, we get the point that there is money available.
I'm not done.
Howard, 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 Mr. Eagle.
You told you were going to let me finish. Now I can't finish.
Listen, you have had the floor for a significant amount of time.
I got solutions.
I'm going to, I'm going to go back here, hear this speaker out and if you still, but I'm going to tell you, Mr. Eagle, I'm going to tell you, Mr. Eagle, this is not going to be a situation where you're going to keep on taking the floor.
I got solutions.
Okay, but, but there's going to be a limit in, in a minute, okay? So let this young lady speak.
That's fine, but don't get tough like.
No, well, no, I'm not trying to get tough. Mr. Eagle, you just keep on coming back up.
Yeah, okay.
And then there is a gentleman, Mr. Eagle, there's a gentleman behind you who has not spoken.
I'll wait all night. I'll be here.
But, but, Mr. Eagle, Mr. Eagle, Mr. Eagle, at a certain point, your turn is going to stop.
My what?
Your turn at the mic is going to stop.
I'm, I'm going to finish.
Sir, go ahead.
Um, good afternoon or good evening. Uh, my name is Dion Rogers, um, East High School, class of 1993. Um, I was here earlier. I had the, you know, I live right up the street. I can tell you, I, I've been a part of this process, um, as a teacher at Freddie Thomas, Dr. Freddie Thomas, when it closed. And where you removed an effective principal, where you removed staff, it didn't work. Um, it, I almost left the district and, you know, wanted to do nothing with the district at that time and see how it crushed the souls of the teachers, the students, the families. And I had to do a self-reflection saying, was this place, a place that I came to make change that I actually want to stay? I would stay in this district if I was a janitor, if I worked in the cafeteria, I want to do what's right by kids. And I commend Mr. Solar, um, as an alumni, um, we got the right man. We got the right man. I believe this is a young, vibrant administrator. Keep him, keep these teachers. Let's find a way and I asked the board to have the courage to stand up to this bully of the state and tell them these options don't work. Buffalo did it. I know what happened to Buffalo, but this is the defining moment in our history of the Rochester School District. I didn't come here to talk and actually I left, uh, thought about not even came, coming back. I came back, I had soccer practices today with 30 young kids from the elementary schools and I rushed home and took off my soccer gear and put back on my work gear for today. I said, I can't come, you know, looking how dirty, you know, it's dirty outside. And one thing my son said as I was leaving, he said, daddy, don't let them close East High. This is, me and my wife met at this school at this McDonald's right up the corner in 1987 and we're together today. My son's a sixth grader and my son, if East High School's still standing, he'll be a seventh grader here next year. Thank you.
I just want to, um, make a comment and I would really like, um, an answer from anybody. I know you're not answering questions at this point, but we're in a rush and we're in a crunch, right? So you have to have this report to the state by, um, May 15th, did you say? That's too soon to put together a plan if you don't already have it put together because we need a contingency plan should this fail and the state says no. What's our contingency plan? The other issue is who's accounting for the money? The money is being mismanaged.
Yes.
Grossly mismanaged. We don't need all that consulting. We know that this is a failure and I beg to differ and I, I respect all you educators in here, but I think Warner School of Education at the U of R, Nazareth and all the rest of these colleges have brilliant people in them and they need to come out here immediately. They have counselors for the resilience of the students because once you make these decisions, what about these students? Where, what are you going to do about the transfers? Where they're going to go? That's going to cause them, you need doctors in here for mental, and I'm talking mental psychological issues behind education because now these kids have to go to Franklin, they're from the west side. We got issues. So the resilience of the children, even if we do have to have one of the five, and we do have to have one of those five plans, we need to talk about the resiliency on how we're going to bounce these students back up so their levels become where they want to be educated. Because if 10,000 went missing in September, what do you think is going to happen next September?
Hey, President White, I had a fleeting thought.
Yes, sir.
So here's my thought. There's been a lot of, uh, I guess call for you guys to have some courage and take up, make a stand and you know that you have to play by the rules of the state ed department. So you're leery of doing that. I don't know if four board members will actually take that stand. That's for you guys to decide, but I don't know you that well, but I've heard that you are a very good lawyer and attorney. So perhaps, maybe you could comb through all of the New York State ed law and maybe you could find some sort of reason why they can't do this to us. So maybe we could use your expertise as an attorney to try to find a loophole in the system and perhaps avoid the catastrophe of what we know has been happening in our schools. Just a fleeting thought.
You, you know.
I don't even care if, hey, I don't even care if you get paid to do it. Like that'd be fine.
The size, the size of the.
I just have a couple more points and I'm done.
The size of the crowd has dwindled down. Uh, Mr. Eagle, literally.
I'm not playing to the crowd. I'm trying to bring help and use the loosen.
Mr. Eagle, let me, let me, can I just talk? Let me, I'm going to give you three more minutes and unless there are, are there any other speakers?
Hard lights.
Yes, there's a speaker over here. Can someone move the mic for her? Thank you.
Um, I'm a parent. This is my daughter. She goes here to East High School, special education. I came last time to the last meeting. It was very, um, good for me. I learned a lot. I used to work for the city school district in the lunchroom and then I started working as a parent and I'm a mother and I've seen both sides. But I, I'm thinking spiritually because you said, what are we going to do for solutions? And I seen these kids in my neighborhood when I first moved in and I would confront them, I would talk to them, I would break up fights. And the one thing that comes to my mind is that the Lord said, if we who are called by His name will humble ourselves and pray, I will heal your land. That's the solution because He can solve all these problems. He can give us courage when we're afraid because I'm afraid. I'm not a speaker. I'm not an educated person, but I see what these teachers are saying with these kids, what they live through every day, what my kids live through. And He is our answer. If we look to Him, He will work this out. He will solve all these problems, but we have failed. I'm telling myself, I have failed. I have not prayed enough, lifted up enough, the teachers, the leaders of our school, of our country. And that's really all I have to say that's on my heart. And I know there's many people here that love the Lord. You can hear it in their voice and the brother that talked about David and Goliath. And David said that you, I am called here, I don't remember the exact scripture now, but he said it's the Lord that sent him. He wasn't fighting him. The Lord sent him. He gave him the power and strength. He told Goliath, you're not going to beat me. You know why? Because God gave him the strength and the ability to do what he can do and that's with all of us. We can do what we can do because God gives us, whether we want to admit to it or not is because God gives us the strength and power. And if we would pray more and lift up each other, there will be a love, there will be a, uh, encouragement to, to go forward and not be afraid. So that I encourage you to put your trust in Him and He will work this out.
My name is Rosemary Wilson.
I'm a staff member at East High School, I also graduated from East High School. And like the gentleman, I too met my husband here at East High School. And it's been almost thirty-four years that we're still together and married, and I thank God for that. One of the things I really wanted to say is this. Working at East High School, we're a family. We're not perfect, but we're a family. We're here for the students, and we work hard with these students, we really do, work very hard for the students. We get up, we give up so much of our time for the students. We, it is so important that East High stay open. Mr. Solar is one of the best principals I have ever worked under, and I really thank God for him. He is a person that will give up his time, he is a person that really care, not only for the staff members, he also cares for the students also, and he will give up his time for that. And he, one thing I really admire about this man is, he has an open-door policy. You don't have to make an appointment to go see him, he always tell us, "My office is open for you." And that's why I really admire him for that. I don't know all about this, you know, this, the state saying this and the state saying that, you gotta choose. My question to the board is, after everybody has said what they have to say, all the parents have talked, all the staff have talked, they have given all the, you know, the statistics about, you know, the graduation rate, about all the stuff that goes on here, what is the board gonna do with everything that they have said? What are you going to do? How are you gonna proceed from what everybody has said? What are you gonna do with this information? What are you gonna do? Are you gonna take it back to the state? Are you gonna fight for us? Or are what we're saying is falling on deaf air? And I hope it's not, I hope you are really listening and hearing what we have to say, because this is such a hurting situation that we're here today. It is such a, it just tears my heart up to see that the staff members here love this school so much, and they go beyond, they give up so much of their time, they go beyond the call of duty. And they don't see it as a duty, they take these kids under their wings. They go, it's not always in school, sometime after school, they give up their time. Sometimes they even put their family on hold in order to take care of the kids here. My thing is, after everything is said, what are you going to do with the information that is given to you from the parents? Thank you.
Okay, now, when we hear from these last two speakers, I will try to address the calendar, what, what people can expect in terms of specific dates, and that will be very brief. But literally, we have, Annabelle-
Yeah, I'm gonna be quick, thirty seconds or less.
Okay.
Don't forget what I asked you to do. I know it's gonna be hard. I can tell you right now, you want me to stand with you, you want me to deliver the message, I'll do it. At the end of the day, all I'm asking you to do is, Buffalo got a distinguished educator. Ask yourself this question, you guys are very smart people, I know the game, I know the rules. I'm in a doctoral program, I've done it all, I could run the district, I could do whatever you want me to do, okay? At the end of the day, ask yourself, did Buffalo change when a distinguished educator got there? And you're gonna see the answer, you're gonna see, no. Still a school board, still functioning, still governing.
That's right.
Look at your pride. Tomorrow morning, you'll wake up, and you'll brush your teeth, and you'll look in the mirror, and you'll have to ask yourself exactly the question that Rose said. Did what I hear yesterday matter? And if it did, hopefully you will make the right decision. And if it's imposed on you, I think the community will support you and say, we get you, we got it.
Yes.
So all I'm, so all I want you to do is understand that at the end of the day, your ether, what makes you a person, will self, will be reflected in the decision-making as a group as a body.
All right, now, let me be clear about this. We are gonna have two speakers, because I see two people at the mic, you will each have three minutes, and then I will turn to the other person, and that's it. And then I will provide a calendar of what you can expect in terms of dates, all right? Mr. Eagle, you wanna go first?
So I'm gonna, I have more to say, I'm gonna condense it. Just one more major point, and that is, that there's already work going on, including some work that you spearheaded, that's very important, it should be connected to this whole effort, this whole model, if you will, that I'm trying to lay out. As an example, the four committees that you convened last month produced some amazing recommendations that would help get at some of the issues that we're trying to get at. For instance, the Parent Engagement Committee recommended that the whole Office of Parent Engagement be slimmed down, that the bureaucracy be removed, so that our decision-making, and you, this is one of the things you say needs to happen. We need to get rid of some of the bureaucracy, so that it can be streamlined, so that the parent liaisons and the homeschool assistants can do what they're supposed to be doing, which is work with parents. This is connected to attendance. You're not gonna get attendance just by knocking on somebody's door and saying, "I'm the superintendent and I want this child to come back to school." And then there's the whole question of, how do you keep them, even if they do come back? But I'm trying to tell you, you need workers to help build relationships with those families. But it has to be a process, that's part of systemic change, it's an example of how systemic change happens. So that's important. The Student Achievement Committee put forth a couple of amazing recommendations in terms of an Office of Social Justice. And they talked about part of what that office would, this was the Student Achievement Committee that Commissioner White convened. And they talked about the fact that that office would get involved with training around cultural competence. And I think they had some other ideas, they never got the time to really work out the specifics of what they were thinking. But those are like fundamentally diff, whatever you do, it's gonna have to look fundamentally different than anything that's ever been done before, because there is no successful model. So we have an opportunity to create one, and to do what you've been to every superintendent. Back to LeVar Wilson, that I remember, comes in the district and says, "We cannot do this alone. We need the help of the community, we need the help of the parents." That's your rhetoric, but it's not your action. This is an opportunity to demonstrate that. Unless you don't think that, unless you think we're a bunch of dummies and don't have no expertise, we do have expertise, we know what to do. We just need to make the resources available and set up the process for it to happen. You got the principal, you got teachers, you got administrators, parents, you got everybody saying they're willing to help do it. This is what you, this is the stand you need to take in terms of the state, to say, yes, we choose one of your models, but we choose one of your options. But we have a particular model in terms of how that option will work for us.
Ms. Thomas?
Here's the thing. We, I can't say that we are all aware, but at least I can say that you are aware and I am aware of the fact that... Thank you. I can't say that everyone is aware, but I know that you're aware and I'm aware of the fact that the state does not really pay that much attention to the decisions that are made at the local level. We know that, okay? The fact that I had to actually go public with the fact that the DCIP was incomprehensive and incomplete, the state had no idea, okay? So you can send them anything, and as long as they get something, they will be satisfied, okay? So as long as they say, okay, we're going to choose Model One, they'll be satisfied with that, and then we can do that model. But we're also all, also very much aware that you can count the schools in good standing on one hand, okay? And so what they're, if you're afraid of them coming in and take over East, why aren't you afraid of them coming in and taking over this district, okay? All right, because this whole district's in problem, and, and, and serious problems, okay? But we can't solve it at this level until we solve it at this level. And this level is the elementary level, and that's why I've been fighting against universal pre-K. Because I don't believe that you should have our children two years earlier to ruin their minds. I think that we need to solve the situation and change education, and you know that this is what I've been fighting for forever, to change education so that it concentrates on the gifts and talents of our children, so that we don't have this problem in the future about closing high schools because we're warehousing children at the elementary level. And if you do believe, if you do believe, which I don't think that you do, and I know I don't, if you do believe that the state is actually paying attention, then if you send them a comprehensive plan of how we're going to fix education from the ground up so that we don't have to deal with this problem in the future, then I think that they would pay attention and respect us for that. I think they would. And I think that if you show them that the community is involved and is behind us on that, I think they'd pay attention to that. And I think that they're so interested in our success that we might get another waiver, because they like handing out waivers, okay? They like handing out wafers like they're cookies, okay? And I think that if we approach them with a viable solution that Mr. Eagle presented, and a viable solution to our elementary level, and, and real, real constructive learning at the universal pre-K level, I think that they might pay attention and they might listen. Because really, they do not want to take over a school or a district, they don't want that headache. They want to sell us, okay? They want to pimp our children out to sell their lottery tickets, okay? They like doing that, and why we don't stand up against that, I don't know. But I think that if we stand up, they'll sit down. Thank you.
Okay. First of all, my colleagues shouldn't wrap up so quick, I'd like for them to make brief comments if they want, very, very brief. But I did want to make my own set of comments, which is to first thank you all for coming out tonight, specifically those folks that took the time to take the stand and share their ideas and their criticisms. Obviously, I want to thank the commissioners for coming out tonight. In terms of the timeframe, I'm just gonna lay it out for you. The district put out an RFP, a Request for Proposals, for EPOs. You've heard that phrase used a lot. The deadline for turning in their applications or their proposals to serve as an EPO is April the sixteenth, it's, it's next week. The district has to respond, I told you this early on, to the, which option we will go with by May the fifteenth, right? And for those of you that had concern or conversations legitimate about the budget and the special committees, that, that, those conversations are ongoing, our next public hearing is April the twenty-second, right, Deborah? And the board's final decision on the budget, which would include those conversations about everything from Dr. Vargas's proposed budget to the recommendations of the special committee, those conversations will conclude around May the eighth, which is when the board votes on the budget. Let me just say, my portion of various brief remarks is that I don't disagree with anything anybody said tonight, and in fact, I'm actually waiting to see what applications we get from the EPOs. Dr. Vargas is actively working on a contingency plan, so if there are no EPOs that apply, or when the board is not satisfied with those EPOs, that we do have something substantive and real to respond with on May the fifteenth. And then finally, a number of people have talked about this consortium, this is not a novel idea, this did not begin here. This idea that we have what it takes in this community to design something that is organic and community-based. Those conversations have been taking place before anybody took the mic today. So we are looking as a, at a board, and not only all the five options that the state suggested, we have an active procedural vendor process for the EPO, and yes, we do recognize that in this room earlier today and outside this auditorium, there are all kinds of organizations. Mr. Eagle mentioned some of them, but there are many more that have the capacity and the power to perhaps put something together that is very unique and powerful. So we are not lying back and taking this, whatever the state wants to give us, trust us on that. Any, Commissioner Ham, do you want to add a few words?
Should be. I guess my main point, we were asked by several people to have the courage to confront the state, and I want to acknowledge, first of all, that Commissioner Powell actually raised that at our last board business meeting, that she proposed that the board collectively challenged the state on this ridiculous, unreasonable, you know, according to all educational experts, anyone who's looking with a reasonable eye at what we're being faced with, that it's just, it's unreasonable. And if we, as board members, don't recognize that and acknowledge that it's unreasonable and it's not in our children's best interests, we're really not doing our job. What do we do with that? We've been asked, Mr. Plizinski came from, you know, a Democratic power politics point of view, stating that he would like to take, you know, the block that he represents and challenge the governor as a, as a close working partner with the State Education Department. We heard the principal, we heard others challenge us to do that. I guess my question is, I'm prepared to do that. I also seriously and soberly recognize President White's concern about the risk that that could pose in terms of a, you know, an expert, what is it called? The distinguished educational expert, who most likely would be along the lines of Mr. Eagle's reference to the Supes Academy, the Brod Academy, it would most likely be someone imposing that style of educational, so-called educational approach within East High School, and we would absolutely not want to see that, I wouldn't want to see that. So I guess my question, back to the East community, and I wish that, you know, it's late, I don't begrudge the people for leaving who left, who posed those challenges to us, would be, what is your step if the state comes back to us and says we're gonna impose an educational expert? Are you prepared, for example, to occupy East High School?
I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight as well. One of the things that's been frustrating to me, and I talked to President White yesterday, is this ridiculous timeline. And when I think about it, if they really want to set us up for success, they wouldn't give us now sixty days. It requires a lot more time, you know, if you look in, you know, I'm in business, I'm not gonna take sixty days to completely overhaul and change a system. So I appreciated Mr. Eagle's comments in terms of looking at planning meaningful change, and you're not gonna be able to get that type of collaboration in sixty days. So I too am open to being able to advocate and to the State Ed that, you know, if you want us to make changes, we need time to do it, and to do it in a meaningful way that is gonna impact our kids in a positive fashion and address the issues that need to be addressed. So thank you all for coming out, it was, I always love these types of events because hearing from you all helps me make better decisions and also builds confidence in what I'm thinking and knowing that people are behind what I'm thinking as well. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, President White, for the opportunity to speak. I guess I don't have to say much because Mary Adams already called me out for having articulated my position at the last board meeting. And in fact, I followed that up by saying, okay, maybe we can't push back on everything, but we can at least point out that some of the choices presented to us have been tried and have been absolute disasters in the past, and there isn't much evidence they've ever worked anywhere, namely, the closing relocation of students and the phasing out of schools to replace with entirely new schools. Others of these options, and I'll give some kudos to President White, he's been too humbled to bring it up himself, but on the conference call with the State Department of Ed, he asked for a ninety-day extension. They gave him a two-week extension, which I thought was criminal. I thought, I didn't think it was too much to ask for ninety days, and even on the conversation, the deputy commissioner said, "No, we're not going to give you ninety days, we will tell you what we will give you if you want to officially formally ask." You know, it wasn't even a sixth of what we asked for. Among the options that we have that convert to us, convert the school to a charter school, not too many people talk to this point, but even if that was an approach we wanted to take, the school district, I only, I only know of one school district across the state that has done a conversion charter. The Board of Education can make that approval themselves, but that process takes time too. That requires a vote of the, of the teachers, it requires a vote of the parents. And I can't think of a more powerful way to express community's support for school than to do a conversion charter. And that's not to say that I'm advocating for it, but that process takes time. And the fifth option that didn't get talked about much, allow the State University of New York to provide education, allow SUNY to provide for the education. Allow SUNY to provide. I think the state has only taken over one school district, I think it was in, down in Long Island, and it was because of fiscal crisis, and I don't know that SUNY is the agency that provided that service. But getting back to the point about, has, has any of these approaches worked, including the distinguished educator? The EPO option that's being pursued actively right now has been, has been put in place in two places, one in New York City, which is an animal unto itself- in two places, one in New York City, which is an animal unto itself, and three in Buffalo. So our question back should be, have those three shown any sign of any progress? And if they did, did they change the way students are enrolled? Or do they still have to take all comers? What, you know, was there a change that actually did anything other than rearrange the location of the students within, within the district? I can tell you that Buffalo is very upset at having a distinguished educator. Their Board of Education feels that they've been castrated. And I'm talking about a body that's mostly women, so that's really saying something. These, these are not good options. I've already spoken too long about it, and I, but rest assured that my, my thoughts and prayers are with this community, and I ask you to keep your thoughts and prayers with me as I help to sort through this. Thank you.
Yeah, just let me say, Mr. Eagle still here? Mr. Eagle was on to something, and I wish you would have kept going. First off, let me be clear, I'm not into, I'm not president of the board, so I can really speak my mind. I'm not into telling the crowd what does they want to hear. So I know there were a lot of speakers that came up and said, "Hey, just let the state," you know, "We're not in the situation that we're in," partly because of the state. I mean, we know this has been an issue in this district for a long, long time. So we have a unique opportunity here to do something different. And I'm concerned about East, but I'm also concerned about the larger district. Mr. Eagle, you had a good point. You started talking about doing this from the ground-based, community-based organizations to do this. Not, we could do this not just at East, but we need to start looking at doing it at other schools. Because there are other dominoes that are going to, going to drop soon. I mean, let's not pretend. It's East now, and maybe one of the other schools that's on the list tomorrow. So we might as well get ahead of this thing. And we might as well get ahead of it, not because the state is telling us to do it, but because it's the right thing to do. Or else we'll be sitting here again next year in the same room, and we'll have people, you know, blaming the board, blaming the teachers, blaming whoever, we'll be sitting here doing that. So I'm not interested in really, you know, I understand politics, it's always political season, blah, 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 whatever. We need to solve this issue now by engaging in this EPO model or whatever model we want to call it, not just for East, but systemically overall at the district. And the last thing I'll say is, we have models that work. People, there are people in this room that are over 60 years old, even before I was born. The Neighborhood Street Academy, the hardest to serve kids. I see people at the gas station say, "I went to the Neighborhood Street Academy." Some of them are doctors and lawyers now. And they, and these kids weren't nearly as bad as some of these students. So it's not like we don't have models in this community that are organic. Neighborhood Street Academy, that's, that is an organic model that, that can work. So, so, Mr. President, I'm not interested, and I'm just being honest, because I'm not, because it's not going to work, okay? I was in, I spoke to members of Buffalo, of the Buffalo School Board, and they have some challenges there. You do not, we do not want someone, an EPO, to come in here and try to tell us what to do. And it will happen. I mean, we can say, "Oh, we'll push back, we'll do it," but listen, talk to people in Buffalo. Call the president of the, of the school board in Buffalo and talk to her. And talk, and ask her what's going on there. I'm telling you, we don't want that to happen. We better, if somebody said, "There's nothing like a crisis to seize an opportunity," we should seize this opportunity and do it now. It's going to take time, but we should think, and just not in the context of East High School. There was one speaker that said, and I'll wrap up, she said, I took notes on every speaker. She said that systemic issues, reactionary system, and we need to be more proactive. I couldn't agree with that more. So, and we know that. So we know that we have these issues with these other schools, so why put our heads in the sand? I'm sorry to East, some of the, East High folks that are still here. East High is not going to close, but something has to change here. The question is, what's it going to be? And I'm telling you, something needs to change in this building. It's got to. It's got to. And I'm going to push for change, but I'm not going to sit here and tell you, I'm going to, my colleagues can do it, but I'm not going to support that. I'm not going to tell you that I'm going to tell the state, "No, we're not going to do it." No, we're going to do something, but we're going to do it our way. And we better do it now while we're in control.
The same thing.
Commissioner Evans, you meant to say distinguished educator, right?
Right, distinguished educator, right. Yeah, distinguished educator. We don't, we don't want that.
We don't want that.
And you know, I mean, you are on the national level, you know, we don't want, we don't want that.
A lot of people don't know this, but Dr. Vargas, the superintendent by law, is a member of the Board of Education. So Dr. Vargas, you will have the last word.
I just want to say thank you. Glad that the student went home and sure will be back, but I want to thank the parents and the teacher here who, even on the difficult situation, continued to work hard, the principal and everybody. This had a difficult time for our district. I will summarize that we need to be more proactive in this situation. Our district is in, have been facing serious challenge for a very long time. And the challenge that we face is that we had, we had to act now. And I understand that they are issue of time, and, but what I mean now, it doesn't mean, like I see here at East, you see the students, they are acting tomorrow. Many of them are showing up here with an incredible motivation, just like their staff. But the district had to change in every single individual that is associated with. Even those that are doing a perfect job and are doing everything, all of us could improve, there's no question in my mind. But I'm, I'm leaving tonight, we are a lot of encouraging because of what I heard from parents, teachers, students, many administrators, community member. And I just want to thank you for that.
Can I get a motion to adjourn the conference hearing? A motion in a second. All of the favors say aye. Good night, everybody. Thanks for coming out.